I'm waiting for Mr. Williams, Mr. Williams. Good afternoon and welcome to the regular meeting of the Beaumont City Council. Today is Tuesday, October the 11th, and given today's invocation will be Pastor Jason Carr with the Apostolic Church. If you please come forward. Everyone, please silence your cell phones. Please silence your cell phones. Also, please stand if you so choose for the pledge to our nation's flag, and you can remain standing. Thank you. You may proceed.
Lord, we come before you right now, so thankful for your faithfulness and your goodness to us this day. Lord, you said if anyone lacked wisdom, let them ask, and you would give liberty, Lord. And we come to you right now beseeching your wisdom upon this group of people, God, that will be making decisions today, not out of personal opinion, God, but based on the good of the people as a whole, Lord. And I ask right now, you would direct, give wisdom and guidance, oh Lord, in the conversation that is to be had here today. Let it be respectful. Let it be kind, oh Lord. Let it be considerate of one another as a brother and sister in the Lord, God, that all of us are your creation and your child. But we love you. We thank you. Bless this great council. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please join us to the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Carr. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mouton.
Present.
Mayor Protim Duriel.
Here.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Felshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one proclamation today, and the proclamation today is for the Gift of Life, Breast and Ovarian Cancer Awareness Day. Whereas September and October are National Ovarian and Breast Cancer Awareness Month, with campaigns established to heighten information on the risk of symptoms and these diseases to advance early detection and intervention. Whereas ovarian cancer is known as a silent disease due to its vague symptoms that make it difficult to discover until later stages with a devastating prognosis. Whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer among American women, except for skin cancers, and approximately one in eight women in the U.S. will develop invasive breast cancer during her lifetime. Whereas this year, it is estimated that more than 310,000 women will be diagnosed with either breast or ovarian cancer, and nearly 57,000 women will die from this disease in the United States. Whereas it is imperative that Southeast Texans are educated about breast cancer and the availability of free mammograms for women who cannot afford health insurance through Gift of Life Women's Breast Health and Center Prevention Program. Whereas Gift of Life annually provides thousands of breast cancer screenings and diagnostic mammograms, ultrasounds, biopsies, with access to cancer treatments to medically underserved Southeast Texans women. Whereas Gift of Life has helped extend the lives of 275 women whose breast cancer was detected through its free clinical services. Whereas to heighten awareness of these diseases and raise funds for its provision of cancer prevention and education outreach, Gift of Life will host the 12th Annual Julie Richardson Proctor 5K Ribbon Run Monster Dash in downtown Beaumont on Saturday, October 29th, 2022. Now therefore, I, Robin Mouton, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim October the 11th, 2022, as Gift of Life Breast and Ovarian Cancer Awareness Day in Beaumont and urge all women in our community to pursue preventive health practices and early detection efforts. Accordingly, I, Mayor Robin Mouton, has set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed this day, October the 11th, 2022. Sign, Mayor Robin Mouton. And the Gift of Life Breast and Ovarian Cancer Awareness Day will be accepting this proclamation as Norma Sampson, Executive Director, and other Gift of Life supporters and volunteers. Please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. On behalf of the thousands of women whose lives have been impacted by our free life-saving services and these wonderful women and advocates that are standing next to me, we thank you, the mayor and the council members, for this opportunity to share our life-saving message with you and everyone today. With me is our chair and founder, who as many of you know is the catalyst for this initiative, and for nearly 30 years, okay, and for nearly 30 years, we have been able to provide and sustain these services because of your support, individuals and businesses throughout Southeast Texas. And so I am so honored that I also have one of our breast cancer clients who has been a leading force and advocate to encourage women to get screened with me, Ernestine Anderson, who is always there paying it forward. Not only is she a survivor, but she's on the boots encouraging other women to take advantage of our screenings. And with me are our officers for the Gift of Life Board of Directors, Dora Nisby, our president Linda Domino, and I thought I had, and Marty Craig's not here. She was going to be here. And also, as a surprise bewitching visit, is our chairs this year. The, not really frightening, but the Bewitching Wiggins sisters, who all going around town. You probably saw them. They were at Oktoberfest, Oktoberfest, and all of the festivities this last weekend. So these advocates of our cause are here to say thank you as well and to encourage women throughout Southeast Texas, particularly those in Beaumont, to take advantage of our services. As the mayor just read, our life-saving services include free screenings, diagnostic tests, and biopsy with navigation to women to cancer treatment. And these are for women who cannot afford health insurance. And this year, just in the city of Beaumont, we provided nearly 700 screenings and over 500 diagnostic test procedures with one woman that's been diagnosed with breast cancer. So so far, we're taking care of eight women throughout Southeast Texas that before, without you and everyone in the community, would not be able to attribute the prolong of their life. So we're going to then celebrating this on the Ribbon Run with Julie Richardson Proctor 5K on October the 29th. We encourage everyone to please register, sign up. Those individuals, those women who are breast cancer, ovarian gynecological cancer survivors, they're our guests. They're free, and we encourage them to call us and be with us that day. We're going to have a heroes' celebration that morning at 8 o'clock, where we'll have our angels and other sponsors who will be with us. And then throughout the year, and this month as well, we'll be doing grassroots initiatives that include free educational outreach that are a myriad of our programs, from Don't Smoke Your Life Away, Don't Vape Your Life Away, as well as educational outreach. So we want to just say thank you, and we've included the information about the Ribbon Run. We also have extensive outreach that's going on this month for ovarian cancer. And then a special program called Active Living After Cancer is free and available to all cancer survivors. So we just want to, again, encourage people, be good stewards of their health, and take care of themselves, and join us in this regional initiative to basically have safe and health life practices. So I would, if I have just a moment, I know you're busy with a full agenda. If anyone would like to make a statement, or anyone, okay.
We're so grateful to you all. This city means so much to us. To me personally, as I get older and older, happening very quickly, I realize the tremendous resource that we have in the city of Beaumont and the leaders. And your leadership is so important, and I am just so grateful for it. But particularly where we are taking care of individuals who cannot afford medical care, cannot afford access to services like those of us who have insurance. So as my mother always used to say, "There but for the grace of God go I." And I'm just so, so elated when we are able to take care of those who cannot do it for themselves, more vulnerable, more disenfranchised, more marginalized, all the words that make it difficult for people to have the care that so many of us are enjoying as a natural, natural ability, I guess you might say, God-given. So thank you again, and thank you to these wonderful people. I just want to say one more thing about.
Oh, and I also, I have Officer Mauro here. Come forward. We, I don't know how we, our pink patrol car, the, thanks to the Beaumont Police Department. If you've seen that wonderful wrapped pink card that's heightening awareness. Officer Mauro is driving out breast cancer personally. She's going to any of the businesses and local nonprofits to, again, heighten awareness and say thank you to those that are sponsoring our cause. Officer Mauro?
We just want to say the Beaumont Police Department is grateful to participate. This is our fourth year for the pink patrol car, and we are very busy this month with the events and just grateful to give back to the Gift of Life.
Thank you. Regina, I would like to say you always stand in the back, in the shadows. No, and it's, and it's not fine. It's not fine because of your generosity and what you have given.
Great gratitude, grateful heart.
Absolutely. We're so grateful for you. Thank you.
We love all of you, and we're so, this beautiful lady is amazing.
Yes, she is.
She's such an inspiration at the young age of 91.
91.
There's no secrets with the Gift of Life, so sorry.
No secrets. No secrets.
Just let me add my thanks to the city council for your continued support for this outstanding program that we have had for more than 20 years. Not every city can boast and have this kind of program. So we are grateful to Regina and her family and all of those who have followed behind her and all of us. And thank you so very much. It's a blessing to be able to do this.
Thank you.
Could I say ditto to that? We've taken up enough of your time, and Mayor Robin, thank you so much for your support, and each and every one of you on the council. We thank you so much. We feel very thankful, grateful, and blessed.
Thank you, Ms. Domino. Thank you.
So could we just take a quick picture?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Angie. Angie's gonna take it. She's coming.
Can I say something? I just want to thank the Gift of Life for saving my life.
Oh, no. No, no. So Ernestine always will come, but she'll say never if I speak. So Ernestine, come back for just a moment.
I just said, I thank the Gift of Life for saving my life. I'm not from Jefferson County. I'm from Horton County, Coons, Texas, all right? And I just want y'all to know that they don't only save lives in Jefferson County. They save lives all over. And I just want to thank them for saving my life because I was detected early, and I just want to thank them.
Thank you all so very much. If you are here for the presentation and would like to leave, now is the time to do so. Are you welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting. I would like to announce at the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplate or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, the claim of Stephen Volner, the claim of Scott Stakes, Michael Davis Jr. versus the City of Beaumont, Cause Number 802-09843, Jeremy Brandon versus the City of Beaumont, Cause Number D-206636. Thank you. Now's the time for any citizen that would like to speak on public comments. You may make a public comment on Consent Agendas Item 1 through 6. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk at the front of the room if you would like to speak on Consent Agendas Item 1 through 6.
Ryan Smith, 600 Main Street, Beaumont, Texas, item C on the consent agenda.
Good afternoon. As the director of the Texas Energy Museum for about 30 years now, and I just want to express appreciation to the, to the council and the city, and also on behalf of our Board of Directors, for, again, the support that y'all shown through the hot tax monies in supporting the museum and tourism in Beaumont. So just for a quick few notes about some of the tourism things that we've done at the museum over the past year. Since October of last year, about 7,000 visitors from 39 states and 21 foreign countries. So again, we're, we're a part of that tourism in Beaumont. Last year's Dinosaur Day was a huge success with about 2,400 people participating. And this year's Dinosaur Day is October 22nd in conjunction with Museum Madness, which is a weekend of all the museums in the area doing something for that weekend in conjunction with the Convention Bureau. And we, we're working with 19 different art classes in the public schools to make more papier-mache dinosaurs. So in the next couple of weeks, you're gonna see these big papier-mache dinosaurs out on the lawn. So, and they're very colorful and creative done by the art classes, the public schools. Last year, we had our Christmas party. Again, we opened up a lot of these things. So the kids, we had about 1,800. This year, the downtown children's Christmas party is going to be December the 1st. After the, all of the closings we had with COVID, we reopened everything this last spring. So we're back to public schools and homeschool programs. We've done a lot of presentations for the industry in the area. This would be some of the summer interns that the plants have, as well as industry new hire trainings, particularly with Golden Pass, LNG, Valero, and Cheniere. We, y'all remember the last May when we had the Art Taco Heritage Festival? We were out there doing wind crafts, so we did a little experiments with wind energy that kids could participate in. We've done a lot of collaborative programs. We've collaborated with the Terrell Library in digitizing about 1,000 photographs that are now available online to people throughout the, throughout the country. We work, we partner with the Beaumont Children's Museum on their space camp and their robotics camp this summer. So you see a lot of collaboration. Again, we appreciate the support y'all shown to the museum over these last many years. We also appreciate the fact that you're putting a new roof on our building. So you'll see that construction over there. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Shelby Brandon, 6695 Noel Drive, Beaumont, Texas, item F on the consent agenda.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Shelby Brandon. I'm the Executive Director of Beaumont Heritage Society, and I'm really excited to be here today to talk to you guys about what we're doing at the John Jay French Museum. We at Beaumont Heritage Society, staff and board included, are incredibly thankful for the Hotel Occupancy Tax Grant from the City of Beaumont and, of course, City Council. With this grant, the John Jay French Museum will continue its mission of fostering a connection to our past with emphasis on local history. I'd like to talk a little bit about what we've done over the last year to improve our site for all of our guests, locals and tourists alike. Last year, we completed the first phase of updates with a new brick walkway and had a new fence built and painted around the museum. This year, we are completing a major update on our office building, which will eventually be home to a new, permanent, interactive children's exhibit. We are currently doing maintenance work on the museum's kitchen and will finish Phase 2 of updating our brick walkway for easier and safer access for our guests. We've made strides and efforts to create new programming in addition to our usual annual events, all which focus on educating the public about the John Jay French Museum or its time period. These events and programs range from free to low cost to paid entry fundraising. Saturday, October 1st, we hosted a free talk on spirits and spiritualism, of which three-fourths of the audience had never stepped foot on our grounds before. We would like to personally invite you to our biggest fundraiser of the year, the Pumpkin Walk, happening Saturday, October 22nd, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. on the French Museum grounds. And we have a stacked calendar throughout the rest of the year with our popular Heritage Happy Hours, a tree dedication to Dr. William Seal happening on our grounds, and a brand new music event coming in December. We've also joined Museums For All, an initiative between the Association of Children's Museums and the Institute of Museum and Library Sciences to provide high-quality museum experiences for families of all backgrounds. With this program, we provide free admission for general entry for up to four guests with the presence of any EBT card and a valid ID. We believe this program will help keep our history equitable and available to all people in our community and beyond, and we're very excited to be a part of it. Thank you again for supporting our mission and for ensuring that the John Jay French Museum will be around for generations to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seth Williams, 6890 Glen Willow Drive, Beaumont, Texas. Check the consent agenda, but I'm not sure what item here.
Good afternoon. My name is Seth Wells, and I am here to discuss items B through I, or more specifically, the, the missing, a missing entity that I believe should be included on this list. I'm here today as a representative of the Beaumont Children's Museum as a recently appointed director on their board. I'm here to request action from this council to correct an issue plaguing one of the most successful creativity-inspiring, tourism-driving entities in our great city, the Beaumont Children's Museum. The impact to our community is undeniable. In 2001, the first year in the post-COVID era, our children's museum saw approximately 45,000 visitors through its doors, where 25% were outside of an eight-county area, more than qualifying for a fair share of hot tax dollars based on the stipulations of these monies. The number of clients for this fiscal year, based on current data, is 55,000 visitors to the museum, a 20% increase in consumers migrating to our beautiful downtown area. Despite this data, Beaumont Children's Museum still receives zero monetary support from our city's tax revenue, instead paying $50,000 to $60,000 back to the city. No other museum in Beaumont is subjected to this type of financial dereliction. Thousands of people visiting our hotels, restaurants, and other museums in which we all love, and the BCM continues to receive none of the tax benefits. As the museum capital of Texas, how can we allow one of our most highly visited museums to be affected in this way? Beaumont Children's Museum often sees more visitors in a busy weekend than other local museums see in an entire year. And those museums are receiving 30, 40, 90, 100, and up to $180,000 in city tax funds. We want people to think of downtown Beaumont as a fun place to be. The BCM creates that bridge to connect visitors with all the fun in downtown. Our city is better because of its presence, and it needs more city support. Museums are the, children's museums specifically, are the fastest-growing divisions of museums in the country. Every direct job in a museum supports an additional job in the economy. This is a higher rate than many other industries. And museums and nonprofit, and nonprofit cultural organizations return more than $5 in tax revenue for every dollar they receive in funding from all levels of government. This is from the National Association of American Museums. So the city of Beaumont is beginning a pretty good deal from the Beaumont Children's Museum. I have been involved in it since its inception. My wife was on one of the steering committees that helped create it with the Junior League, and we will be involved in the Beaumont Children's Museum ad infinitum as long as it is available, because we have said constantly that the future of this city is dependent on how we educate our youth. Please help us support that idea.
Thank you.
Paula Bothe, 2635 McFadden, Beaumont, Texas, item I on the consent agenda.
Good afternoon. Shorter than average. On behalf of the Spindletop Gladys City Museum Director, Troy Gray, and the rest of the Board of Directors, I'm here to express our appreciation for your support in a grant from last year. This year, the overall attendance improved by 4,000 more visitors than last year, and we have the best December attendance and revenue on record. Visitors included people from 48 states and the Armed Forces Pacific, plus 34 different countries. Visitors from new places this year included some from Cayman Islands, Estonia, Jamaica, Martinique, Singapore, Slovenia, and St. Kitts. Events at the Christmas, events included the Christmas Boomtown, the Country Life Festival, and the Spindletop Anniversary, which is an annual thing I've been participating in since the 100th anniversary in 2001. Improvements to the museum include a new exhibit, extensive repairs, and upgrading of an additional exhibit. Your grant helped us achieve these milestones, and we invite you to the museum to see the results you have helped make possible. If you come Friday night, October 21st, between 5:30 and 7:30 p.m., we will give you some Halloween candy, and you do not have to bring a child. We sincerely, sincerely hope that you will continue your support of the Spindletop Museum as part of Beaumont and Southeast Texas heritage. It's the basis of our economy today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Bell, 505 Orleans, Suite 103, Beaumont, Texas, item E on the consent agenda.
Always bring my partner when I come to places and talk. I wanted to, first off, bear counsel, thank y'all for letting us come today and visit with you. We survived the weekend with our dogs, and we, we thank y'all for letting us come over. If we look a little tired, we've got some board members that are here that helped. It was a big day. Had a lot of people. Thank you for leading our Strut-Gumut Parade. I think everybody had a great time, and we appreciate y'all participating that did participate. It's been 30 years since we've been y'all's partners, and we have enjoyed every minute of it. And I wanted to thank y'all for letting us come over and kind of tell us that we're gonna have a 31st year, hopefully, as our funding comes in. Was in a good meeting with Carol and our new city manager, Mr. Williams, a couple of weekends ago, and we know there's some new council people that are sitting on the council. know there's some new council people that are sitting on the council that maybe don't know a whole lot about what we do, and I apologize, but we put a packet together for everybody, and we're going to keep in touch with y'all a lot more than we have in the past, so that the new members of Mr. Getz and Mr. Neal and a few people, you know, and Odwin, and, and of course, you know, Mr. Felchall, y'all have been around and you kind of know who we are, but we're going to kind of reintroduce ourselves to y'all. So while Carol's handing these out to y'all, we, I hope you have enough.
She just came.
We just want to let y'all know we've had some great interest from some investors in the last week or two that we're meeting with later this week to look at some buildings that we hope are available for people to come in and try to rehabilitate, and can't tell you who it is yet, but we will. We're doing a lot of things as far as some planning in the future. We've got some new events that we're going to try to come up with this year that might be pretty fun. We thought one of them might be a good deal to have would be a wiener dog race, but we were going to try to do it at the, at the art festival in the, in the dog festival when we had it, but we were so tight on schedule, we figured we couldn't have it. So we may have a yappy hour and do nothing but wiener dog races. So that might be a new thing that we do. But we just basically came today to thank y'all for everything y'all do. You've done a wonderful job keeping the city properties in good shape. The streets look good. We love the bicycles rolling around town. We like the scooters that people are on. We like everything that y'all do, and we support it, and it's a wonderful thing to see people having a good time and getting out this time of year. And I think there were a lot of good events that happened last weekend, and hopefully, you know, we'll keep doing a lot of that. I am going to tell you that I would like to see the Battleship come here. I think it's something that we kind of brought out first.
I'm sorry. I think your beeper went off a few minutes ago.
Oh, it did. I better get out of here.
I'd just like to say one thing. The packet, it's who we are, what we do, and our quarterly reports for the last year, and our request for funding that we had sent. So if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to Tom or I at the office. We'll be happy to meet, sit down and meet with any of y'all. Thank you again. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, I had a question about the public comments. This wasn't just limited to the consent agenda, but also to the regular agenda items. If people wanted to speak, for instance, on the Battleship, they could do that now. Is that correct?
So they checked the box. So they can speak on public comment, they can speak on anything on the consent agenda in one through six. So they were able to speak on it, but most of them checked the box to speak during public hearing, which allows for public comment as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so are we going to allow?
So it's, it's really up to the speaker, but most of the, Tina was very diligent in making sure when they checked the box what they wanted to speak and when. The public hearing for the Battleship does allow for public comment, and so after the presentation and the discussion, the mayor, mayor and council can open up to either hear from the public then. You can reserve it and wait to hear, you know, at the conclusion of the public hearing, but most people chose to spoke, speak during the public hearing, but they have the option to speak now if they like.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, well, he's welcome to come up.
Alto Watson, twenty-six fifteen, Gladys, Beaumont, Texas.
Y'all know where I stand on the Battleship, Texas. I've been with it since the beginning. It should come here. I brought, I've only found out about this yesterday, so I brought some little pamphlets here with some facts and some numbers, because that's something that other people have been here. You can follow along with me if you want to. I looked at every single Battleship museum in the country, plus some other ships, to look at the, the amount of people that go, because there's been a problem associated with people saying, well, the Battleship only had sixty thousand people, and that's because you can't get to it. On the way over here, I had this copied at, at the Office Depot, and one of the guys, their manager, was a school bus driver. And he says, yeah, it was impossible for us to go there. You had to go all the way to Baytown, you had to go all the way back, or you had to go across that super crazy little ferry, okay, which is dangerous. And so nobody wants to go. So I went through, with the exception of Massachusetts, but you couldn't get any numbers yesterday because it was Columbus Day. I got the numbers for how many people have been there, and if you just follow along with me. The Battleship North Carolina has a hundred and ninety-one thousand people average going to it, and with the, with documentation. The USS Iowa has two hundred and fifty thousand. These are World War II battleships with backup. The Wisconsin has two hundred and fifty thousand people a year. The Missouri has had eight million people since nineteen ninety-nine. They just don't have a total numbers. The USS Yorktown, which is in Charleston, South Carolina, I've been spending a lot of time there because my wife's son lives there. The USS Yorktown is a World War II Essex carrier like they have down in Corpus Christi. It is the number-one heritage attraction in South Carolina, bigger than Fort Sumter, which is in the same bay. So think about that. They draw more people to a boat than to where the Civil War started. So, and the last one I have on here is USS Alabama, which sits on Interstate 10 on a point with a parking lot and nothing around it. No downtown, no Crockett Street, no theater, no energy museum, no children's museum, nothing. Okay? They drew three hundred and fifty thousand people last year, and they have had eighteen million people go across its decks since nineteen sixty-five, which is seventeen million, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine more people than we're getting here right now. I mean, the children's museum, that's forty-five thousand people with little children, twenty-five from other counties. Those kids would go to the Battleship, Texas, while they're at the children's museum. Without a doubt, they would show up. Then my wife, being smart, she went through, she's the numbers lady, she runs the checking account. I have another handout. The USS Alabama has three and a half million dollars a year. I'd forgotten about the Lexington and Corpus Christi, but those people down there are inventive. They have escape rooms on the thing, the escape room thing. They have teaching, they have movie nights on the flight deck. They have overnight camps, which we've talked about before. They have not only the largest haunted house in Texas, but the largest haunted house in the country on this ship. And so people come from all over the country to go to it. And so it's, they had two hundred and seventy thousand visitors last year. At eighteen dollars and ninety-five cents a ticket for the haunted house, they charge thirty, and they are fully booked up.
Mayor, I didn't turn the timer on, but his time is up.
That's okay. Anyway, and then the last one here is, of course, the Intrepid in New York. I've been to a wedding there. I've been, I've had drinks on it. They, they have thirty-four million dollars in revenue. It's a New York thing, okay? But that's the kind of thing you could have here. I mean, I keep saying that Beaumont's idea of historical restoration is to tear down a beautiful old building and put a plaque instead of a beautiful old building used to be here. Stop it. Bring the Battleship, Texas.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have one more that wants to speak. I have one more. Brian Niffo, thirty-four fifteen, Laurel, Beaumont, Texas.
It's hard to come behind that. Good afternoon. Just wanted to speak that I am a proponent of the Battleship. Obviously, one of the councilmen over there is as well, so giving one of these cool little pens if I came up here and talked to you guys about it. But he gave all the facts and the details. I completely concur, so it's difficult to come up with anything that he hasn't already stated. So I'm, I'm all for it, and I think that all the side business that it would bring would help revitalize downtown. And obviously, when you get off of the ship, you go to all the rest of the museums that are here. And so that was all I had. He kind of stole the show. Yeah, we could. Thanks.
I think that's all I have, Mayor.
That's it?
I hope so. Mayor, so before she starts, I need to find out, because everybody else that I have green slips for, except for maybe four, want to speak on Battleship. So I just need to, do we, because?
It says Battleship?
It's Battleship.
Yes.
And it's also tourism, so both, but.
Do you need to leave?
No, I do not need to leave.
Could you wait until we get to Battleship?
I can. Yeah. I just do mine kind of tied in.
Thank you.
Okay. That should be it then.
That's it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. At this time, I would like to call for a motion for the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to, I move to approve excluding item M for the purpose of recusal.
Okay, we have a recusal on item M. Councilmember Felchall? I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Councilmember Neal?
Thank you, Mayor. Can we talk about the process on how we, how we select the museums that we're giving money to?
So the process for hot tax donations to the museum district and arts support has basically been the same for, for years. We have an application that we send to interested parties. We usually do that in June or try to do it in June. That way, we can incorporate the numbers when we're working through the budget drafts in, in July and August. And we present those to the city manager. As you all know, the charter states that the budget is the city manager's budget. So in the past, we've always been given direction by the city manager as to which, which entities to fund and, and how much to fund. But in actuality, it's, it's pretty much been the same since 2013. The same entities get the same amount of funding, except for maybe two years ago, I think the Spindletop Museum approached the city manager and asked for some funds. So, so they were at it maybe two years ago. And then I think CTAG kind of split with the downtown business, Cultural Arts District. They split, but they shared the same annual allocation between the two. So like I said, so since 2013, it's been pretty much the same entities receiving the same amounts every year, except for the exception of the Spindletop Museum.
So did the children's museum apply for this funding?
I know they came and talked last year. It might have been after the budget process, but yes, they did apply this year.
And what's the city's reasoning for overlooking them?
I don't know if Dean or Chris Boone wants to chime in at this point or not, but basically, I, I know it was discussed, the application was discussed, but I was never given the green light to put it in. There's, there's, I know, just to give you some background, in case one of the two want to, want to talk more on it, you know, I think by statute, you know, you can spend up to fifteen percent of your hotel funds on supporting the arts. So three million times fifteen percent, that's about four hundred and fifty thousand. We usually allocate close to three hundred thousand a year, so I know we're getting close to the cap, although there's another hundred and fifty thousand in that, in that cap, if my interpretation of the statute's correct. And also, this was probably the worst year for the hotel fund, because council's been asked to have the hotel fund support the new nature center out there. So that's about another eight hundred thousand dollars of operational costs that CVB, the hotel fund, has absorbed, and their fund balance is at three hundred thousand. Well, that's what the budget, next year's budgeted ending fund balance is three hundred thousand. It's never been that low. So I don't know if all of those were factors or not, but Chris, if you want to chime in, or if Dean Conwell's here, they can, they can add to it.
Yeah, the only thing I'll add is, as Todd mentioned, it's a combination of, you'll see general funds contributing to some of these organizations, the bulk of it being hot tax, which of course is, the idea behind that is comes from hotel occupancy taxes to help, you know, encourage visitors and tourism to our area. And again, as Todd mentioned, for the past ten years, this has kind of been our, this has been our allocations to these organizations. And so the idea was to keep that the same going forward.
I guess my, my thought, though, is headcount-wise, as far comparing the children's museum to the other museums, do we know where they, where they rank? I mean, it sounds like they're one of the bigger crowds.
Right. So each of the entities is required to report, but there, there's not a, there's not a standing process, other than what Todd mentioned, for evaluation, ranking. In other words, you know, per dollar, per visitor. We, we don't have that kind of process set in place.
So if the council so chooses to add the children's museum to this allotment of money this year, how would that work?
We could handle that in the budget through savings in other areas, or if it causes us to go over budget, we'll of course come back to council and ask for a budget amendment.
I guess my last question, I'd be interested in hearing from the CVB where the money actually runs through to see if they have any comments on this.
Yes. We, we strongly support the children's museum. We think it's one of our top museums. But with this new nature center, it's going to cost us about three million dollars to do what we properly want to do. We used to manage two buildings. Now we manage four buildings. We've had to add staff. Our expenses are getting incredible. The hotel tax collections for this year were not near as good as last year. I think last year, when the hurricane hit Lake Charles, our tax collections were up about six hundred thousand dollars for the year. We would like to support the museum, but if we're ever going to open up the nature center the way we want to do it, it probably will not open up at least maybe two or three more years.
What if we were to, what if we were to reduce the amount that we're giving some of the other people to give the children's museum some?
I think that would be the most logical and equitable. I'm not sure how much, how many, much the children's museum wants or is requesting. When I came here twenty years ago, it was basically the way it is now. It's a hundred thousand dollars for this museum, a hundred thousand dollars for this museum. It's, you know, they're great museums, they get good headcounts, but how many of those people actually stay in hotels? So that's, that's what we have to look at, the hotel tax dollars. So there's just, I'm not sure there's enough funds to go around to do everything we want to do.
Councilmember Samuel.
Yeah. I know, over the years, I've not known any set strategy that was used to allocate the funds. At one time, you know, it wasn't a problem, but we're seeing growing numbers now. There's a special, there's a criteria that must be met to even apply. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And how do we get that information out? Because I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong. Over the years, we've simply been refunding those who had applied before, and that's the way it was done.
In the majority of the cases, that's exactly right.
Okay. So now we're at a point that we have more individual entities wanting to get funds, so, but we don't have a criteria for determining how much will go to them and whether they will get anything. So do you believe that, I ask this to you as well as Todd and Chris, do you think we're at a point now we need to get put in place a mechanism to determine how this is going to be done?
Yeah, I would agree with that completely. Like I said, in the past, it's, it's always been, you know, up to the city manager to delegate how much money went to each entity, and it stayed the same for years. We're to the point now, especially with more funds being requested, and if we do reach the cap of fifteen percent of hotel tax revenue, that limits what we can dole out. So there absolutely should be some kind of criteria to measure and evaluate, and maybe with the new city manager on board, you know, we can discuss that with him and develop something for next year.
Yeah. And with that, this is for the 2023 budget year. These applications, the funds will come from that, correct?
That's correct.
And most of these came from hot funds, but a few came with hot funds and funds from the Capital Reserve or general, general fund?
Not the Capital Reserve, but the general fund.
Okay. So that's primarily the two, but that also is equated to the purpose of the tax, hot funds, which is for tourism and.
Yeah, it needs to directly enhance and promote tourism, the convention, and the hotel industry. Those are the three. Yeah, it needs to directly enhance and promote tourism, the convention, and the hotel industry, those are the three criteria, those are the three, you know, objectives of the hotel tax, and within that criteria of meeting, you know, enhancing tourism, the hotel, and the, and the, uh, convention industry, you have nine categories that are statutory allowed to spend hot tax on, and one of them is support of the arts.
So, Mr. Manager, that's an issue that we, that could be easily resolved, because we have to come up with some mechanism, uh, for allocating these funds.
Councilmember, I'm sorry. Who was getting ready to speak? Okay, Councilmember Turner and then Councilmember Gads.
I agree with, uh, Councilmember Samuel on the mechanism. I believe, you know, based upon what we heard today, I think it's, you know, adamant that we create a system, so we can make sure we get these funds out fair and equitable to everybody. I'm a component of children, and I definitely think we shouldn't overlook anything that results to children, because I think that's one of the main things that were on this, or that was on this list, it had to do with children. Uh, the hot tax funds, I added up, that's roughly two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars that we spent, so that was the exact dollar amount. But my more concern is the money that came out of the general fund, which came out to be two hundred and ten thousand dollars roughly. So, I had other people ask me, when they seen we were giving out funds, okay, if we're giving out funds, how do we apply, what do we do to get them? So, the money coming out of the general fund, what is the process, what is the system, is it something that's open to the public, or is it something we kind of just send it to, uh, who we normally deal with?
It's a joint application, it's all included in the same application. I can only guess as to why funds came out of the general fund in the past, my, my assumption is that hotel tax revenue was a lot lower back in two thousand and thirteen. And so, if you can only allocate fifteen percent of that to the support of the arts, the overflow went to the general fund. And so, we just carried that, that tradition with, you know, with the city manager in place at the time. So, but it is all included on the same application.
So, even with the funding that comes out of the general fund, and I think, my personal opinion, when it comes to the chamber and Main Street, you know, we as a council, I think, it'll be good for us to work better together, and we probably hear from them more on a, maybe quarterly basis, so we can be updated and know what they're going on, you know, versus, you know, we got to go to them, but we actually work together and know what's going on, and see how we can work together. Cause I think hearing from them on a quarterly basis, we can kind of be abreast of what's going on in the community, because often when people see development, and they want to know information about downtown, a lot of people ca, contact the council members, so if we can establish a better working relationship, where we can kind of communicate, maybe quarterly, maybe they come in and give a report, so we can all be on the same page, I think that would be very beneficial, if we can look at doing that in the future as well. You know, just create a good streamlined process, so the communication can be clear to everybody.
Mayor, may I say one word?
Sure.
Uh, but three years ago, we had no idea we were going to be taking over the task of redoing the nature center out there. So, that's basically going to be, it's almost been a two million dollar hit, and it's going to be another million dollars to do it properly. And, could I bring up Brian Smith for a second, if you'd like to say something, please?
I just wanted, I just wanted to bring up a historical point, going back to nineteen eighty-five and nineteen eighty-seven. I can't speak, there's no one here from the art museum, but I know the art museum and the Texas Energy Museum were created as part of that revitalization in the nineteen, in the eight, in nineteen eighty-seven, nineteen eighty-five, as a partnership with the city. So, the city was instrumental, a, a partner in creating the art museum and in creating the Texas Energy Museum. So, we're not coming back as an existing entity, not, not, I support every museum in the area, but just to give you historical context, these two museums were created as a partnership with the art museum and a private entity, I mean, with the, with the city and the, uh, the, uh, the entity involved. So, I just want to give you that historical pers, perspective, because the Texas Energy Museum was created with the gift from Fort Worth, because the city and Lamar University gave something like eighty percent, uh, of creating that entity. So, I hope that gives some perspective, okay, thank you.
Yeah, a, and lastly, uh, we, as a council, was privileged to visit Nashville and Tennessee. And one thing that I seen with the museums out there was pretty cool, I actually took my kids to do it, they had one museum ticket that gave you the opportunity to go see all the different museums downtown. So, you know, if our museums could come together and kind of create a mechanism similar to that, I think that would boost tourism as well, because, you know, I think a lot of people are real big on history, so if we can look at a way, maybe on weekends, that, that one particular day, we could do one ticket and allow families to move from museum to museum, I think that would be beneficial to all of them together, so, that's just a suggestion of another city I seen.
Thank you, Councilmember Gads, and then Mayor Protim Durya.
So, I think that, uh, what you just said, uh, Councilman Turner, is going to be kind of a component of this museum madness, where you can get into all the museums, but I think you're talking about doing it more than just once a year. You know, I remember when the Beaumont Children's Museum did not have a brick and mortar place, they just had a doll named Stuffy. And they would go around, and that would be, uh, the Beaumont Children's Museum's, uh, way of educating children about anatomy, and they did various things. But they proceeded through the years to grow and grow and grow to where they are now, forty-five thousand visitors a year. I, I, I mean, they are by far the largest, uh, museum in terms of visitors. We need to find a way to support them, and I don't think we need to put that off to next year. And, you know, with regard to items B through I on the consent agenda, I would ask if we could consider looking at these items separate on the consent agenda, because I'm prepared to make a motion to reduce across the board all the allocations that are proposed on here by five percent, and bring that money to the Children's Museum, which will give them about twenty-seven thousand dollars. I think it's the fairest and equi, most equitable way to do it, because, you know, five percent is not going to break the bank for any of these, uh, various entities that are giving, being given this money. But it will mean a lot when you add all of that up to the, uh, uh, amount of money that the Children's Museum would give. So, Councilmember Felschah, would you, uh, accept an amendment to your motion for all of the consent agenda to just, uh, let's talk about items B through I right now, and then go to the rest of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, so with that being said, um, I, I move that we,
There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Okay, uh, there's a motion on the floor, and Mayor Protim Durya would like to make a comment, because it's discussion.
Oh, Dean, also, I just wanted to make it known, of course, we support the Children's Museum, but isn't the nature center geared more towards children? Kind of like a children museum, that have interactive things for the kids, and, and things of that nature?
Yeah, it certainly is, it's for children, and it's for visitors, it's for people that respect nature, it's for birders. Not only are we planning on redoing that building, we're planning on building a trail, a race trail through the park, that will connect Cattail Marsh to the nature center. So, when people drive up, instead of going in one museum, loading the kids up, driving around the other one, now they can just walk, it pretty much be a seamless approach.
Okay, and now the, um, your current plan, when is that, current planning and funding, when should that be complete? Where it could actually be in use for kids?
Well, we're going to concentrate on the larger side of the building, the left-hand side of the building, uh, we're in the process of getting some bids. We're, we've been working with a company out of Houston, that's shown us some different renderings. Uh, we think that would cost about a million dollars to have the major part of the building done. Then we want to move to the outside, and then we'll move to the right side after that. Probably open up one side of the building a year for the next three years.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Samuel.
Thank you, uh, as mentioned, as the, uh, uh, motion, the proposed motion that Councilmember Gads has put on, uh, that's not going to change, uh, the, it's not going to change the impact on the nature center at this point. Would it, in, taking the five percent?
It, it would be the same amount of funds, so it really shouldn't cha, change anything.
Okay, thank you. Mayor. Uh, while I'm here, and the proposed motion was made, I will, I accept the motion that's been made, or the amendment, and I will remain with the second on that amendment.
Okay. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you Mayor, uh, one of the most discussed things, discussed things a, a council will do is, every year, is talk about distribution of hot tax funding, but also nonprofit funding, uh, with groups around the city. So, uh, and looking into the future, from what I've heard from you today, we will go, come up with some guidelines, we will, uh, put together a set of guidelines and a process for this to, uh, play through for next year in the future. Uh, staff will put it together, and then it'll be approved by city council, so that we'll all be on the same, uh, page. You know, staff's done an excellent job, they were working with what they had in the past, but it's just an imperfect science, and, and it gets real difficult to do. Uh, but, uh, we would like to recommend too, that basically, if we could keep the funding the way it is, and we can, uh, fund the Children's Museum, if you so choose, out of the general fund, and that way, we won't, we won't have to reduce anyone else, that's an option too, that you consider, we, we do have some dollars, uh, available to do that, if you so choose, you do, do what you please. Um, just a couple other things, updates, uh, you will start getting regular updates, as Tom said, I met with the, uh, uh, Main Street, and you'll start getting the, the quarterly updates from them, and the chamber up there on that, but, um, future, I li, I would, I would recommend separating the, the nonprofit funding from the, um, uh, hot tax funding, you know, cause the hot tax, the main criteria is putting heads in beds, if it doesn't put heads in beds, you, you're not supposed to fund it, even with the other eight criteria, eight or nine criteria. It's got to satisfy that first, and then the other nonprofit things, uh, items, we could do that with general fund. But, there are some things you can consider, if you so choose.
Thank you, Councilmember Neil.
Thank you Mayor.
And Councilmember Gads.
I agree with, uh, what our city manager recommend, considering that most of these entities have probably just gone through budget season, and have already, uh, probably counting on this money coming in. Um, but if we could find a way to give the Children's Museum some money this year, but then have everything shored back up before next budget season.
Councilmember Gads.
Mayor, I'll, I'll withdraw that motion and make another motion that we, uh, allocate, that, that would have raised twenty-seven thousand dollars for the Children's Museum, if we were to cut everybody else by five percent. But I'm, I'm prepared to withdraw that motion, and, uh, move that we, um, say twenty-seven thousand dollars from the general fund, if, uh, if that's the desire of the city manager and council.
Okay, so, your motion.
Let, let me, just for the sake of clarity, can, can I just make a motion, uh, that, uh, we approve the consent agenda, uh, excluding items B through I to be dealt with, and, and M, uh, to be dealt with separately. Let's get the consent agenda approved, and then we can come back and discuss these museums, can we do that, we're getting in confusion.
I second that.
Okay, so, uh, I move that we approve the consent agenda, excluding items B through I and item M.
You're excluding yourself from M, correct?
Uh, we're going to vote them separately.
We, we'll vote separately.
We'll deal with B and I. We'll deal with B and I separately, and item M separately, but let's get past the consent agenda, then we can deal with the museums and M separately.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor? Mayor Protim Durya.
If we're going to fund the Children's Museum with money from the general fund, it's no reason to delay voting on B through I, because they're getting the same amount of money?
So, we're not delaying, and we're just going to hold it for further discussion separately, so we just want to approve I, the, the other items, and then come back to discuss those items separately.
Right. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second on the floor for the consent agenda, all in.
For items A, J, K, L, N, O, P, Q, R, S, and T.
Everything but B through I.
B through I and M.
B through I and M. All in favor of approving those items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Now, may I have a motion for item M?
So, move for item M.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, any discussion for item M?
I have a question Mayor.
Councilmember Neil.
So, talking to the attorney, I guess?
Oh no, not for this attorney, just for item M.
Only item M. You're okay? Okay, all in favor of approving item M, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One recusal.
One recusal, the motion carries with one recusal. Now, may I have a motion for item B through I?
Mayor, I move that we, uh, approve items B through I, uh, but also that we allocate twenty-seven thousand dollars out of the general fund to go to the Beaumont Children's Museum.
Before we have a second to that item, that really needs to come back as a, a second posted item next week. So, you can request that it be added to the agenda, but we can't approve it today, because it wasn't a posted item.
Then I will change that, so that I will request that to be come back as an item next week on funding the Beaumont Children's Museum out of the general fund.
So, ta, technically, we're tabling it till next week, B through I.
No, so the motion is to approve items B through I, with the condition that the Children's Museum comes back for approval next week.
Out of the general fund.
Can I just mention one thing? Someone on council asked earlier, and I have the information, I don't know if this is going to change council's direction or not, but on their application, they did ask for sixty-one thousand five hundred out of the hotel fund, and forty-six thousand out of the general fund. And I believe they're here, if y'all wanted to ask them questions.
They should come back next week, and it's a posted item.
Okay, all in favor of approving items B through I with?
You don't have a second.
Oh, may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor.
We had a motion. Oh, sorry.
Okay, I thought so. Okay, all in favor of approving those items that we just discussed? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Excuse me, whoever's cellphone that is, could you please excuse yourself, and take care of your cellphone? As announced initially, I ask if you would please silence your cellphones at the beginning. No one is moving, so whoever's cellphone that is, please turn your cellphone off, or I will ask to have you removed, thank you. So, ladies and gentlemen, this is council working together, and working to the benefit of our citizens, and our museums, and activities and events in the city. So, to all of the council, thank you, thank you, so we're going to move right a, right along. Mr. City Manager, may I have the reading of item number one, please?
Thank you Mayor and council, item one is to council consider resolution approving the purchase of one articulating dump truck for use in the solid waste division.
This is. Excuse me, uh, Mr. City Manager, could you please? Thank you. Thank you Officer Raleigh.
Okay, council consider resolution approving the purchase of one articulating dump truck for use in the solid waste division. This is to replace an existing dump truck, uh, that is outlived its expected life.
Thank you, you've heard the reading of item number one, may I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You know what, now it's getting disrespectful. Okay, but you're going to have to turn your cellphone off, but it's still, it's still interrupting the meeting. Okay. Okay, so whoever's cellphone keeps going off, if you would please turn your cellphone off. Okay, well sir, if it's off, I'm, I'm not speaking to you, whoever, I, I can't tell whose cellphone it is, but the next time it goes off, I'm going to have Officer Raleigh. Whoever, I, I can't tell whose cell phone it is, but the next time it goes off, I'm gonna have Officer Raleigh escort you out of the meeting. Thank you. Okay, so.
Okay, Mayor, next item, council consider resolution approving the purchase of miscellaneous equipment for use in various city departments. This is to replace, uh, Moore's ATV vehicle, uh, tractors, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. You've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Turner, then Mayor Pro Tim Durio.
Just a question just for staff in general. When we replace this equipment, do we, what, surplus it and resell? Or do we kinda just utilize it if we need it, something breaks down?
Most of them are, um, sold off in an auction per state law, but, um, in the cases where the fleet manager feels that we need one for reserve, he'll hold it for reserve, but most of the time they just go to auction.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure he was a profit for the ones that was left. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Durio.
Yeah, I noticed that we buying this from a capo- uh, Kubota tractor place in Grapevine, and I know we going through the co-op. There's a big Kubota tractor place right here on College Street. Do they not belong to the co-op?
Look in the top right-hand corner of the quote.
Hold the quote. It is what?
Fleet manager's in the back. He said that's from the local office.
Local office, okay.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Mr. City Manager, may I have the reading of item number three, please?
Yes, Mayor and council. Uh, consider resolution approving the purchase of one case wheel loader for use in the water utilities department. Again, this is to, uh, replace an, an existing piece of equipment which has exceeded the expected service life.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please?
So move for, for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number four, please?
Council consider resolution authorizing the, the city manager to execute change order number five to the contract with Propite Inc. for the sewer evaluation work order contract phase four rebid project. And if you have any questions, uh, Bart, we'll go ahead and address him.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number four. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor and discussion. Councilmember Turner.
Hey, Bart, I noticed it says change order number five. I- is this the fifth change order this particular company has requested?
This change order in particular was to add items that were not included in the original contract. So it's a number of storm drains that are of different dimensions as well as a twenty-six inch sanitary sewer. We didn't have that size in the original contract, so this was at our request.
Also, it's just additional, it's not existing?
It's additional work, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? No other discussion? Please signify, um, if you're in favor of approving item number four by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number five, please, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor. Council consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number four, accept maintenance and authorize found payment to Playco Limited for the lift station at wastewater treatment plant repairs tropical hor- tropical storm Harvey Group Two Lift Stations Project.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number five. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Have a motion and Councilmember Neil, second.
Second.
Councilmember Neil, Councilmember Neil, second. Mayor Pro Tim made the motion. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I need to recuse myself from this vote also.
Okay, and Councilmember Felschar, recusal. Any other comment or discussion? All in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number six, please?
Actually, Mayor, there's a, it's such a public hearing, but before we enter into the public hearing, um, the item for Battleship Texas is actually listed as a work session and not a public hearing. So if the individuals checked public hearing, but were actually wanting to speak on the battleship, they should be allowed to speak now.
So anyone that wants to speak on the battleship?
If they, if they requested to speak during the public hearing and were expecting to speak on the battleship during the public hearing, they should be allowed to speak now.
Okay. Do you have any? You can speak now. You can speak now or after.
Yeah.
If they speak after, they'll speak during.
During.
General comment. Um, the public hearing is for the manage, emergency management plan. Angie had originally said that it was posted as a public hearing. It's not. It's posted as a work session. So when people walked in and they checked public hearing, if they were intending to speak on the battleship, they should have been allowed to speak before. Because the battleship isn't a public hearing, it's a work session.
It's a work session.
So they should get to speak now.
Okay.
And then if they choose to speak after doing general comment, they can as well.
Okay, so you are allowed to speak now because it was down as. A public hearing, a workshop instead of a public hearing.
Okay, so, so sir, you're out of order. If you wanna speak, uh, when she calls your name, if you choose to speak during public comment, you'll just say that you wanna reserve for public comment?
If she calls your name, you could just say you wanna reserve it for after. Okay, you may proceed.
Steve Hoffman, seventy forty-five Blarney Street, Beaumont, Texas, wants to speak on Battleship.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Councilman and all staff, you've seen him before up here with some, some shirt or another from the Battleship Texas. Um, I remember the first time I saw the Battleship Texas was right after I came arrived here in Texas. My dad had brought me over there and told me about things that happened in World War Two with him. Uh, he was not on a ship alone, but he was a, 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 uh, mate, moving, uh, supplies back and forth. He went down to South America to pick up rubber, which they had U-OKs, looking for ships the entire way. And then he was doing it across the Atlantic, uh, and they loaded him with the ships loaded with ammo or tankers. So it wasn't like he was shooting guns. He was just moving supplies and then he participated in World War, World War Two in, uh, uh, when they, they took over to, um, landed in Europe, okay. I'm just having a hard time with the, the phrases I wanted to say. And so, and then he also followed it to Italy when they took Italy. And then he also was there when they brought supplies in, uh, into North Africa. And he wouldn't, like, as most soldiers, he didn't want to speak about it because they were asked not to and they, they were mustered out. Problem is that he saw the bodies washed ashore from D-Day and finally got, and, and then Italy, the same thing. And he said that it was something he didn't wanna talk about in front of his children, and he said he, he followed the request of the military. You know, he, he volunteered to go two days after Pearl Harbor and, uh, they asked what they wanted to do. He said, "Put me in the best job that does the work for the country." That was the way he felt. My, my great grandfather was the same way. And, uh, he followed the ship in it because he didn't know it was moving around, but the ship was in the same place. Where the action was, Battleship Texas was there. And, uh, I have a, have a little thing I picked up over the years that was a commemorative flyer where they have the post office. They send out an envelope with a, and, and this is commemorating Navy Day in nineteen thirty-three, October twenty-seventh. And, uh, it, it, uh, it takes and it shows on the interior card that was put in there, it shows Teddy Roosevelt, who was in, uh, head of the Navy, and then it also, uh, talked about where it came from. The, uh, the envelope was postmarked with, with postage stamp and it was postmarked in the closest, uh, post office for the, for the crew. In this case, it used the onboard Battleship Texas, uh, post office. They, they, they had the post office, they, so I looked at it and, uh, they later took, took the, the, it took the ship, took the mail to the, to land in San Pedro and they took it and transported it to the Navy, uh, post office and it went out. And ever since I've got around that, I've been kinda in love with that ship. And when I came back, related, when it was in great shape, I was really happy. And then to see what the, the, the family is doing, family is doing with the ship now and the crew and the foundation, I'm very pleased.
Thank you, Mr. Holland.
Great thing. That will bring people to us because it's gonna give the city one thing it needs, focus.
Thank you.
We've not had a focus.
Mr. Holland, your time is up, I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's just my thoughts. But I pass it on. Sorry I stuttered so long.
That's okay.
Um, John Goodyear, Sep- I'm, I think that's seventy twenty, Blarney, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. Um, I'm here to help, to see if I can get you guys to do everything you can to bring the Battleship Texas to, uh, Beaumont. It's a great way of revitalizing southeast Texas, not just Beaumont. We're sitting out there with a road that goes where you can see it from the bridge and you, you've got a hundred, two hundred thousand cars going by there every day. If one percent of those people come in and it's one point five people per car, that's fifteen hundred people a day that would be drawn into downtown Beaumont. We also have a revitalization of Crockett Street. I mean, it's empty right now. You're gonna have entrepreneurs that are gonna come in and take advantage of that ta- traffic flow, plus others that might open up in other areas of the city. And, uh, you also wanna promote it with billboards, say, in Orange or Vider or Winnie or Mount Bellevue with the exit saying ninety seconds off of Interstate Ten, you can be at the Battleship Texas. You don't have to hunt for it, you can see it from the road. Uh, another nice thing is you wanna put billboards about the size of that screen in the parking lot with a map of downtown Beaumont and the, where the art museums are, where the restaurants are, uh, any kind of attractions that we can bring them in there, plus other attractions like Spittletop or places that are away from downtown, and you wanna have those there too. We got RV places in this town popping up like mushrooms, and those people are coming into town and they want something to do also. So you're gonna bring in a lot of money, sales tax, increase in, uh, uh, property values. You're gonna take advantage of all these people coming in. This is the best thing as far as trying to grow tourism in Beaumont that I've ever seen in my life, and I've been here a long time. So I urge you to move forward on this and bring in something that's gonna generate a lot of cash. We can talk about the traditions of Texas and where it's been, but the bottom line for y'all is the money, okay? And I'm certain that that's the real reason we wanted to come here. I mean, it'll be a great attraction, but think of sales tax, think of hotel tax, think of the money that people are gonna spend in this area. I appreciate it and please bring Texas to Beaumont.
Ben, and I think this is Apple, Ackelson?
Yes, ma'am.
One four seven three one Boomdocks Road, Beaumont, Texas?
Yes, ma'am.
I thank you committee members for this opportunity to get up and speak on this particular program. We have been blessed more than many communities. We have got the opportunity to have this battleship, this glorious ship brought here to Beaumont. I agree with what all those before me have said. Yes, it'll be a moneymaker. It, we have it down here, I guarantee you it will. I guarantee you that Beaumont will be known nationwide for having it. It is the only, only Dreadnought that is still floating. Dreadnought being a, a type of ship used around World War Two, uh, World War One, excuse me. It is a veteran of World War One, it is a veteran of World War Two. Not only is it a glorious ship, it has been considered by its crew members a lucky ship. In all its wars and all its days, it has only lost one man throughout the Pacific and the Atlantic. The Texas was known. When the Texas came on the scene, the battle was won. It fueled the other ships. It supplied mail. It did, you know, I, I can sit here for hours and explain to you the merits of the ship. Let us forget that for just a moment and let's look at what we can do as a city. There are more than you all that can contribute money here. I will guarantee you that if it became known that definitely positively the ship was coming to this location, there would be benefactors out there interested to help. I am a scout leader. I can guarantee you that the Boy Scouts, the local Boy Scouts, would be interested in helping out. You know, a long time ago, the Constitution came here to be refitted. The Scouts helped with that. We can do it again. Because as the Constitution is a great ship for America, the Texas is a great ship for Beaumont. I can only thank all of you for listening to me, and I hope that you consider this well because trust me, it is worth it. It is worth it for the old sailors, the military, patriotism, you name it. It's much more than just a museum. It's a wonderful museum and, and a lot can be done with it. It, it can be a mini civic center. But the main thing is, it is the Battleship Texas and we have the one in a lifetime opportunity to have it with us. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Wilton Johnson, sixty-eight fifteen Tallow, Beaumont, Texas.
Madam Mayor, council members, welcome. Mr. Williams, uh, one question. Have you ever started a job and they ask you to get a World War One battleship parked out front? Well, we're about to ask you for that. Um, this is really a no-brainer. For thirty-six years, the, your predecessors, oh, I'm sorry, and staff as well, thank you for the time. Uh, for thirty-six years, your predecessors have thrown idea upon idea against the wall and nothing has stuck. This is a no-brainer, a no-brainer. You've heard from other cities. The one most close to us is Baton Rouge with the USS Kidd. They see eighty thousand people a year. That's apples, comparing apples and apples. I tend to cities, four, four hours apart. So, what I'd like to share with you other than that, oh, even during the pandemic, it only dropped to fifty thousand. And this is coming straight from the Greater Bo- uh, Baton Rouge Economic Development Council and the USS Kidd Foundation. I have that information for you if you'd like me to email it to you. What I really wanna share briefly is, um, when this first came to, uh, became knowledge that it was possible for us to acquire the Battleship Texas, the, um, first thing I did was I put an online, uh, petition through Change Order just to gauge if anybody felt as strongly about it as I did. And as of this morning, there's fifteen hundred, more than fifteen hundred signatures saying, yes, it needs to come to Beaumont. That's, that's partially statewide. There are some from the, across the state. What I found interesting was twenty-two thousand people were interested enough to read the petition. Now, some people are skittish with technology. They don't wanna commit to anything, you know? So, but twenty-two thousand people were interested enough to read what was going on here and statewide. And then we had, of those twenty-two thousand, more than four hundred shared it. They felt it was important enough to be shared and for other people to know about it. I like numbers. You can't argue with numbers. So, I have lots more information. So I have lots more information, if you'd like. I, too, as the gentleman who first spoke, did a little research with cities across the country who have a similar situation, what it does for them, no negatives, nothing but positives. And I want to reiterate the fact that with these last ten seconds, that when you cross I ten, you look over to your left and you see this majestic battleship, you're not shutting the kids up, they're going to want to go see it. You're going to stop.
Thank you. Thank you. Frederick Future Lear, forty-nine fifty-five Ada Street, Beaumont, Texas? Kathy Hughes? Where's Kathy? Okay. One sixty-five East Caldwell Drive, Beaumont, Texas?
Hi, I just wanted to come to you as a tourism person, as well as a citizen of Beaumont, and I haven't gotten to meet you yet, but I'm going to. I worked for the city for almost twenty years. I was the Director of Tourism, and I absolutely love the city. And I can remember when I first started here in the late eighties, that Jeff Russell was my boss, we would be stopping and I'd be getting on a bus and I'd be their step-on guide and tell them how great it is. But in that time while we were waiting for the bus to get there, we'd be sitting on I ten, and you've got to do what you've got to do to get tourism. And so we'd be sitting there and he would say, count the cars, count the cars, how many cars are going down I ten? What can we do to get those people off of I ten? If you ask somebody, anybody, and they haven't spent a lot of time in Beaumont, have you been to Beaumont, Texas? Oh, yeah, drove through there once, that's right, because we're on I ten, we've got I ten right there, but what do we need? Something that says you have arrived. You've arrived, now we've got this Beaumont sign next to the visitor's center. Oh, did I tell you I represent Jefferson County Tourism, I'm the Director at the Ben Rogers Regional Visitor Center? And so you want something that tells you, you come across I ten, my husband drives it every day coming back and forth from Orange, and he tells me, man, if we got that boat, it'd be crazy, it'd be awesome. I've had visitors, and I'm going to tell you one in particular, we came to a meeting here, I don't remember how, a couple months ago, but it was in the summer, and I got back to the office and I love to work the front desk, I know I have to do all the correct work in the, because, you know, being the Director and all that, everybody wants to get paid. But my favorite part is working the front desk because it reminds me why I got into this business. I want to tell people how great it is and how wonderful it is, get people to stop and spend more time and spend their money. And so I had this woman and her son, and I said, well, hi, where are you from? And she was from New Mexico or Arizona, and she has family in Florida, and she was driving back and forth, and I said, well, how was your trip? She goes, it was great, he piped up, he was like this, you know, on his phone, and he piped up and he goes, we saw the USS Alabama. I said, you did? She said, well, I had been telling him for years, every time we drive by, we're going to stop, we're going to stop, we stopped and we're going to make it our stop every time. I'm sorry, but I'm going to tell you, you've got to spend money to make money. Talk to Grapevine. Anybody was that went to Grapevine when it didn't have all their Legoland and they just had the train? Yeah, they've done a whole lot in thirty years, and I've been in this business longer than thirty years. Look at Baytown, yes, Baytown wants it too, but you know what Baytown's done in the last seven to ten years? Grown huge, huge in tourism. Look at all the things that have come in there. And if you want to know, I'll share it with you. I get her newsletter every month and every week. Anyway, thank you, if y'all have anything, you have any questions, holler at me, but it'd be a great thing.
Thank you. Virginia Sasser, thirty-three oh five Redwood Drive, Beaumont, Texas?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Virginia Sasser, a longtime homeowner and taxpayer here in our city. I am another voice in favor of providing a home to the Battleship of Texas to help restore its dignity and the reverence for her for four reasons. One, if my research is correct, and I'm sure it's pretty correct, the Battleship of Texas is the only naval battleship that served in two world wars, the one and the Second World War. Two, the only Dreadnought left on the planet. And three, she also served as flagship in the D-Day invasion. And fourth, she earned seven ribbons during World War Two, which reminds me of a student who's working very hard and graduated valedictorian of the class. That's the Battleship of Texas, and she deserves all the respect for all those achievements as a battleship. The battleship reminds me of a veteran who fought foreign wars and came home to America homeless probably and jobless, as is the case with some veterans that we have. It is utterly shameful, I think, not to come to its aid and not to provide a home for her in our city. Somehow, the battleship also reminds me of the Alamo, of the thirteen defenders who dug in in order to win against the thousands of enemies, and the thirteen defenders who left us a legacy that is now a worldwide tourism draw. There's no question to that. Also reminds me of, no, I already said it, a veteran and the Alamo. For those of us who may put more value on money, I'm sorry to say, who put more value on money than our history as a nation, as a community, and our heritage, then I am like the others who can guarantee that the battleship is a tourism draw. I am from Hawaii originally, and I consider myself one of the tourists who visited the battleship twice in La Porte, and during the visit, I gave quite a bit of my money to La Porte in terms of shopping after the visit and other things else. I thank you for this chance to speak on behalf of the battleship.
Thank you. Joe Sasser, thirty-three oh five Redwood Drive, Beaumont, Texas?
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilpeople, persons. Thank you for this opportunity to, oh, Danke, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about the Texas. I can remember the first time I saw it, nineteen, oh, no, wrong, nineteen seventy-six, and going through it as a little kid and just being amazed at everything that I saw. And of course, you want to touch it, you want to play on it, you want to get on the guns and pretend that you're there and have fun, and children can still do that, and they do still do that. And I ten just doesn't go around here, it goes from California to Florida, it's a straight shot. So it's, you've got an endless array of cars from who knows where in the country that's going to pass it every day, going to see it and go, ooh, I didn't know they had that. And in nineteen ninety-four, I was commissioned by the Texas Department of Parks and Wildlife to photograph the ship. They had it dressed as it was in nineteen forty-four, so they wanted a record of how it looked. Took me three months to do it, and the first thing I said was take me everywhere somebody can't go, because that's what you want to see. You know, at least, I do, I want to see what everybody doesn't get to see. And they did that, it took me three months to do it, and I handed them the photos and everything, and it was, there's so much to see and even now more to do on the ship. It will cost nothing for Beaumont practically because it's going to be paid for by the state and the Battleship Texas organization. So you don't have to worry about that. It's just going to be, as everybody said, nothing but a positive for the city, it's going to be a draw. You're going to see it, you're going to go by and you're going to go, I want to see that, whether you're going this way or going that way, whichever way you go, you're going to get them, and they're going to stop and they're going to spend their money, and which I know is like the bottom line thing, but as my wife said and others have said, it's the last existing Dreadnought in the world, there are no others. It's the last that served in both world wars, there are no others. And it's, it's a piece of Texas history, and Galveston wants it, Baytown wants it, they have enough, who wants to drive all the way to, I don't, I just want to come downtown and see it and spend my money downtown and have a good day. It's a no-brainer, as someone else has said, but I do believe that today is going to be a historic day for Beaumont. And to finish up, if y'all wouldn't mind signing the little agenda, then I'm going to put it in a frame next to my photo of the battleship once it's here. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get it to you after they're done signing.
Okay.
EJ Shepard, forty-seven ten Cleveland, Beaumont, Texas?
I'd like to thank y'all for the opportunity to come and talk to you about the Battleship Texas. I think all these people have given you all the numbers that you possibly could want in order to make the right decision. I look at it as a little differently than they do economically and stuff like that, I know it's going to be a plus, but every town I've been to that's had a battleship, and when I go to look at that battleship, I feel a little twinge in my back, it makes me want to stand up a little straighter, a little stronger, you know? That's, that's our military, that's what America is about, it's got a strong military. And you, you can't help but stand up when you come across that bridge and you see that ship, you know, you're going to stand up a little straighter, be a little prouder and say, yes, I'm an American, and that's what I love. My dad took me to the battleship when I was a little boy. I took my son to the battleship in Boy Scouts. The only negative thing I can say about the Battleship Texas is it's a terrible place to sleep, and I wouldn't want anybody to have to do that at our age. Those kids, they loved it and they enjoyed it. I just applaud you for looking at and taking the opportunity to bring this to Beaumont, and I think everybody here in this proud city will stand up a little straighter if that thing's in the, in the, next to the Edison Plaza. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Christopher Matthews, thirty-eight seventy-five North Major Drive, Beaumont, Texas?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council. I want to preface with, I want to preface my comments with this, last year, we had a town hall about the AT&T deal. Councilmember of War Two, you were opposed to that deal and you brought up the Battleship Texas. I called my city councilman of War One, and I called city councilman in large, and I asked him, why can't we do both? So I want to start with saying that I was open-minded to this idea, okay? But you were opposed to working with others for the AT&T deal, so I just want to preface my comments with that. I'm not opposed to this battleship coming to Beaumont as long as it's not a burden on the taxpayers and citizens of Beaumont. If there's state funding for that, I'm open to it, I'm not opposed to, hey, look, I love history, I'm not opposed to it, my grandfather fought in World War Two, okay? But I'd really like to see the park downtown, the Riverwalk thing, and I think the battleship could be complementary to it, not supplementary to it or standalone. One more thing I want to bring up is that the median age group of Beaumont is thirty-four, thirty-five years old, okay? Beaumont is forty-nine percent black, all right, and I believe another twenty-five percent Latino when you take into account for the undocumented Latinos. There's only one demographic majority that has come and advocated for this battleship today, okay? And I haven't seen anybody else from that other majority demographic of Beaumont come and advocate for this, and their silence speaks just as loud, okay? I'm not opposed to it, but it's got to make sense, it's got to be done right, it's got to be done right. People that live here aren't just going to go to see the battleship every day, you know? Now, maybe if you were to put a Rayo's coffee shop on the deck or something like that, that would make it kind of dope, you know? That would make it something for maybe even some of these older people, that they would go every morning and have their coffee. But anyhow, I'm going to end my comments there, y'all have a nice day.
Thank you. Casey Matthews, junior, fifty-two fifteen Burbank Drive, Beaumont, Texas?
Good afternoon, thank you. I probably had a whole lot more to say, but it's all been said pretty well. I'm definitely for the battleship. I think we have a great opportunity here and it will transform Beaumont for sure downtown. So I'm for it, I also think it's been in the wrong place for a long time, and any numbers or history on it can't apply to this. We're the best place for it, fresh water, protection somewhat from hurricanes. I hope we'll all urge it to come on. Thank you.
Thank you. Darren Lopez, seventy-one seventies Shady Lane, Beaumont, Texas?
Honorable Mayor, honorable members, my name is Darren Lopez, as you stated. I just found out about this, and so I didn't really have anything prepared, but I had a couple minutes, and my clock is ticking here, so I want to get to it as fast as possible. Okay, I'm not your resident historian, I am a former naval intelligence professional who had the opportunity to study every ship and platform in the entire world. There's arguably no ship surviving with more history than this ship, and much like the history of Beaumont and southeast Texas. And I take a lot of pride in that and saying that as a Beaumont person and as a naval veteran. I'd like to bring the light, you know, you'll hear from historians and other people, but one of the major things that stick out to me is that it's one of the eight remaining ships and the only remaining capital ship to have served in both wars. And I guess the history lesson here is a capital ship is generally a leading ship or a primary ship in a naval fleet. And like the Battleship Texas has led the fleets of this country forward for over a hundred years, I believe that the adoption of this ship to Beaumont, Texas will do all the things that everybody has said and the things that you will talk about in the future, but I also believe that it'll make a statement that going forward, we're prepared to lead the next hundred years as well. And I would just like to end with this, I'm not going to take all my time. God bless Texas with his own hands, brought down angels from the promised land, he gave them a place where they could dance. If you want to see heaven, brother, here's your chance. I've been sent to spread the message. God bless Beaumont, Texas.
Thank you. You got me choked up, I want to say thank you for your service. Steve Kurtz, two fifteen East Florida, Beaumont, Texas?
Hello, City Council, and thank you for City employees and all the city people that live in the city. After the War of eighteen twelve settled the legitimacy of the United States of America, the push westward known as Manifest Destiny began. In eighteen seventeen, Noah Tevis married Nancy Nixon Tevis. In eighteen-seventeen, Noah Tevis married Nancy Nixon Tevis, Nancy Nixon in northeast Louisiana. And Gilbert Stevenson came around December eighteen-twenty-four here, almost two hundred years ago, and I believe went back and told my ancestor, oh, I'm the descendant of Noah and Nancy Tevis. Gilbert Stevenson came through here in eighteen-twenty-four, and I believe he went back and got them and brought them back here. So, Noah and Nancy Tevis migrated to the west bank of the Snow River, that original name. They owned, I imagine, dogwood flowers or something floating down the river. Snow River, they owned no slaves. He cleared the land himself, built and operated a ferry. David Brown, a surveyor and land speculator, cheated the Tevises out of half of their league of four thousand four hundred and twenty-eight acres, which went basically from College Street to Calder out to Lucas. And so after Noah died, they discovered this theft, and Nancy took him to court, to liberty, and got five hundred, got their land back and five hundred acres of his land. Nancy Tevis may be the first female landowner in, in Texas. When Nancy Tevis died, she gave this valuable riverside land to be property, to be a park for all of Beaumont to enjoy. So, as Chris said, the council voted to tear down the AT&amp;T building, but I understand politics somewhat. And so, I do understand that it's a valuable asset, and we should look at all options. After speaking to my new friend that I'm at here, Darrell, Darren Lopez, I realized that, and thank you for your service and all of, all of the service members, that my opposition may not so been opposing the ship coming to Beaumont. I realize that my concern is where the ship will be placed, the view of the Beaumont. So placement of the ship in relation to the park is critical. I want to see, I want to see Interstate Ten, because we don't, I'm a fisherman, and I know about the wheelhouse, and they got ships going up and down. That's interesting. And to me, when I walk down the, I kind of look at Interstate Ten. So, it's the placement of it, is that, that I think. And so, you know, just imagine an eighteen-wheeler. I was going to try to show you and try to come up and block your view and show you what I was worried about, you know? That, that it would block your view, and I was going to say, imagine an eighteen-wheeler in front of your house or an RV or bus. But please fulfill Nancy Tevis's vision for a park for everyone in Beaumont, and please do not block the view of the new park. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. City Manager, would you please read the caption of the public hearing?
Yes, Mayor. I received comments regarding the city's emergency management plan, and at this time, I'd like to ask Tim Oxnercheck, Emergency Management Coordinator, and Shaquena Nobles, the Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator, please come forward with the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager, directors and staff. I'm, I'm going to be very brief with this. So, next slide. So for emergency management, Texas Government Code four-eighteen requires the city to have a plan, an emergency management plan, or be a part of a multi-jurisdictional plan. And in April fifteen, April fifteen, two thousand and eight, as you know, the city of Beaumont adopted an independent emergency management plan, and that's what we're here today to discuss. Government Code four-eighteen also requires that we have an annual public hearing of the non-sensitive portions of the plan. And so I will be addressing what the program is doing and what our plan consists of over the next few slides. For further reference, Beaumont City Ordinance one point zero-three addresses emergency management, the program responsibilities, city policies, further support that particular ordinance as it relates to emergency management as a whole. And I've listed a few of those there for you. Next slide, Tina. So, the emergency management program and plan consist of the basic plan and, and an additional twenty-two functional annexes that support that basic plan. All of those can be found upon the city's website under the Emergency Management tab. Our emergency management also plays a vital role in keeping the city prepared for a coordinated response to any major event, emergencies, or disasters. And our coordination efforts includes all five missionaries, mission areas of emergency management as defined by FEMA, and those are bullets hit below as well. All emergency management personnel, the office number, as well as my number and Tim's numbers can be found on the city's website for any citizen that reaches that, wishes to have further comment about the plan there as well. So, our emergency management program, we are involved in many major incidents. Currently, our ongoing recovery efforts include Harvey, the COVID-nineteen pandemic, Hurricane Laura, as well as winter weather, and additional hazmat incidents that happen on the highways. We coordinate with the major event planning team, which consists of multiple representatives from each of the departments in the city. Currently, we have Gift of Life coming up. That's a really big, major event that attracts a lot of attention down to downtown, and bring a big crowd to downtown as well. And we're increasingly adding more events as we move past a new post-pandemic area, so that is, that is increasing as well. We participate in many exercises, including the Mass Notification Drill that goes out annually, as well as response drills to other departments and divisions and businesses and government sectors as well. Our emergency management participates in several additional trainings as well. We provide and/or host training in all five of the mission areas of the emergency management, those missionaries as well. And the plan and the training includes all different types, an entire gamut of training as well. In addition to that, we facilitate the after-action reviews of all major incidents and disasters and events as well, just to figure out what we can do better and how we can improve the program with every, every incident we have. In addition to the emergency operations planning, we try to plan out over a three-year period what are we're going to be focusing on, what trainings we're going to target for first responders, as well as city employees that have a role in emergency management office. We participate in community-wide planning events, and we do a significant amount of outreach to the citizens so that that we know, and that outreach does include EOC tours. We solicit cellphone registration so that we can do that. And then we also participate in many of the state legislative advisory and emergency management committees that give voice for this area to the state as well. And lastly, we have the Emergency Management Mitigation Plan that we've been working on, and this is a five-year plan that we partnered with the entire region through the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission, and we put together this hazard mitigation plan. That plan requires a five-year update to be reviewed by FEMA, and that's currently what's being submitted. We worked on that plan at the beginning part of the year, and it's reviewed at the state level, and then it'll be forwarded to the federal government for final approval, and we expect to bring that before council in, in the coming weeks.
So, in order to help the budget issues, the local budget and funding issues, we do try to leverage with collaborative, collaborative participation from all the departments and even the region, some faith-based organizations and others, some funding to support the program, the various preparedness, mitigation, all the, the different response equipments and so forth. So, we, we posted some of the funding streams we have, and that includes quite a bit of recovery funding that's being facilitated from FEMA for the five active disasters. Next slide. We also try to facilitate training, whether we bring it in, get trainers that can train locally, or leverage by sending people out to places that have free training. We have some organizations that help us with our matches that includes the emergency notification system, radio, maintenance, and, and some other issues. There, there's one military surplus program, the Law Enforcement Support Office Program. This is one of them that we have a mandatory requirement to bring to y'all. I passed that attachment out. I left some in the back, and it's also posted on the Police Department website under the Administrative Division, so that if people want to see what items can be requested, it's on there. Right now, we don't have any of those items. We don't anticipate asking for any of those items this year, but we are required, starting a week ago, to notify everybody about that. Next slide. So, again, we do have an emergency management webpage. We have a lot of links on there for everything, from signing up for cellphone registration, which we really need to encourage, and getting training and so forth, postings of recovery opportunities and, and other things. Next slide. Shaquene already mentioned some of the programs that we offer. You can go on there to the website, get our contact information, and request these things. We do a lot of them. We also have some template plans, so if everybody needs to be prepared, not just the city or, or the businesses, even your homes, household, college students, wherever, make sure your family's prepared, as well as your, your organization. Next slide. Again, our goal is the whole community coming together for collaboration. I think you can, we have demonstrated a very resilient community, and that's our comments, unless there's questions.
Any questions? Thank you all so much. We appreciate all of the work that you do.
Mayor, this is a public hearing, so if you can open the public hearing.
Yes. The public hearing is now open. City Clerk, are there any one that would like to speak?
Addie Allen, ninety-six, ninety-five Gross, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, City Manager, Mayor, Council. Addie Allen, nine-six, nine-five Gross. Standing here as I did last year when the management plan was presented. And I still stand on and hope that you will consider an audible sound in the management plan. For example, in Dallas, which is much larger than us, but as Jefferson County and all the surrounding areas, I did some research, and there is no industry, other than Lamar and Exelon, that have audible sounds. So, I'm asking, it's going to be, and I was told it would cost a lot last year, but what costs a lot if you lose lives? So, in the management plan, and that can be found in the code of federal, in the codified federal registry, that a management plan should have some kind of sound. So, I'm just asking, please consider that. For example, last October, we had an incident, high winds. I have a hole in my roof. My neighbor had a hole in their house, in their bedroom. And then out at Lamar, there was damage. I didn't have a TV on, and the telephones can go down. So, if that happens, what are we going to do? You have trained personnel, but then they're going to be subjected to how they're going to get to all the people, one hundred and eighteen thousand people in Beaumont. So kindly consider in the management plan, some kind of audible sound. If you want some information, I, I have it. I'll volunteer, you know? So, I'm just asking, let's save some lives in our management plan by having an audible something, not a cowbell, but something you can hear all over the city. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. And Mr. City Manager, will you take us into our work session?
Thank you, Mayor. Our first work session is to review and discuss the operation of Bird scooters within the city of Beaumont. And I think we have Mr. Michael Ellis here today with Bird scooters to come forward and, and give us a discussion.
Great. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council for having me, and City Staff as well. I appreciate the opportunity to give an update on the Bird scooter program here in Beaumont. By way of introduction, I am Michael Ellis, the Account Manager for Bird here in Beaumont. I work closely with Chris Boone and Demi Eggman from the Planning Division to help manage the program and ensure the program is running smoothly for the city residents and our riders as well. I've been at Bird for about two years now, Texas-based, and I helped to manage other programs in Texas, such as Austin, San Antonio, and other mid-side cities like Abilene, Plano, and Texarkana more recently. Next slide, please. So, I'm here today to give a program update, where I'll cover the program from a high level, include some backgrounds, some key ridership statistics, as well as some of the city concerns and the steps that we've taken to address those. Next step, please. So, it's been a while since my colleague, Mike Butler, came to present to you guys earlier this year. So, as a reminder, Bird's mission is to make cities more livable by reducing car usage, traffic, and carbon emissions. We offer a form of alternative last mile, or first mile, last mile transportation in about four hundred cities across the globe. So, in our eyes, less cars on the road, the better. Next slide, please. Thank you. We launched in, we launched in Beaumont in February of this past year, and since then, we've seen a significant adoption of the program in fairly short timeframe. So, for example, we've seen over forty-two thousand total trips since our launch in February by eleven thousand unique users. So, to put that into perspective, that's about ten percent of the Beaumont population. They've taken trips that have totaled about one hundred eighty thousand miles ridden on Birds and avoided about twenty-five metric tons of CO2. So, also, to put that into perspective, one hundred eighty thousand miles is about three-quarters of the moon. So, that's also just since February. It's a pretty impressive stat. So, those are some incredible numbers, but another important thing to note out of those eleven thousand unique users is that a thousand of those, or just about under a thousand, fall under our commuter profile. We created this profile to show that rides are not just being taken recreationally, which I'm sure you guys know they are, but rather to show that residents of the communities we operate in are, are using this on a regular basis to get to and from work. So, these could be residents who don't have a car, who, who don't use existing public transportation or don't have public transit nearby. So, the commuter numbers we're seeing are, are pretty significant as a portion of the total ridership, totaling about thirty-five hundred rides. Moreover, residents in Beaumont are using Bird across the city and not just in the downtown core. So, we see ridership across the four wards with higher concentrations in the downtown area, but also a, a pretty large segment in the southwest and northwest corridors of the city as well. So, something to note about this level of adoption is that it's had a positive impact on local business. There's a news story done by KFDM back in late April, where a local restaurant owner of Crackling Kings, Prentice Siemens, he credited the arrival of scooters with a surge of business. He says, quote, "People who are out here, they're out and about, and of course, they're hungry. They didn't want to go home and eat, so they stopped in and came inside. It actually saved our business. It helped us out tremendously, so we really appreciate the scooters." Siemens' statement echoes the findings of a twenty-twenty-one study done by Emory, Emory University School of Business that found that every deployed e-scooter brings in around twenty-two hundred dollars in, annually, in increased incremental spending at local shops and restaurants. So, with just a couple hundred scooters on the road for a, a given year, that's almost half a million dollars spent at local businesses and restaurants. So, and these are just a few of the positive impacts that we've seen on the ground thus far. But I did want to cover some of the concerns that have been brought up and also some of the steps we've taken to address them. So, first, while residents ride across Beaumont, we have seen the highest concentration of rides taking place near the event, event center close to downtown. So, this initially resulted in scooters being parked on the property. And since then, I've been working closely with Emily Wheeler, the Director of Events at the Event Center, to put in some, some solutions to address those concerns. First and foremost, an initial geofence was set up around the event center, and it was marked as a no park and no ride zone shortly after launch. We have recently increased that to include the half-block across the street, as well as a buffer slow zone around the entire event center area. So, the red is what demarks the no park and no ride zone, and then the black is what demarks the slow zone of ten miles an hour, just as a safety precaution for pedestrians who are in the area. Additionally, to give out some of the clutter and oversaturation of scooters in the area, we have recently implemented a deployment cap of twenty-five in that event center area, as you can see on the far right, as well as a deployment cap of forty-five in the broader downtown area. While this has affected ridership a good deal, we want to work with the city and the property owners in the downtown area to make sure that the program's working for everybody and that scooters aren't ending up on their property and the like. and that scooters aren't ending up on their property and the like. So the second concern that's been raised is tied to underage riding. While our rider agreement requires riders to be 18 years or older, we saw a large uptake in underage riding, particularly once schools got out in June. This typically happens for two reasons. The first, parents are allowing their kids to use their account and their credit cards, which is admittedly harder to police if you have parental consent. And then the second, kids downloading the app and creating their own accounts using their own payment methods. So in June, we witnessed an abnormal level of users using Cash App and prepaid debit cards as their payment method, and from my experience in other cities, this is typically a proxy between underage riders who don't have a credit card and sign up for the app using prepaid debit cards or Cash App that they can use on their phone. So to combat that, we outright banned Cash App and prepaid debit cards under a certain preauthorization amount of $20, and since then, we've seen a large reduction of reported underage riding incidents in the city itself. So I'll also be working with Demi and Lauren Monents from the city on a new social campaign to add a different level or an additional layer of communication to our riders, as well as utilizing some of the city's social media channels to raise awareness of our expectations and the risks regarding underage riding. On top of that, we've begun banning accounts that have been flagged our way as potential for being underage, and I had a meeting with Assistant Chief Plunkett last week, where we discussed underage riding and the capabilities that we have to ban riders outright, and he'll begin flagging incidents my way as well. So lastly, the issue of clutter and tipped-over birds has come up throughout the program, so wanted to touch on that a bit as well. Specifically, in the downtown area, if you see a tipped-over bird, we've recently developed a technology where, that's also been implemented in Beaumont as of a few weeks ago, that notifies our fleet managers, who run the local operations here on the ground, as soon as a bird is tipped over. Their response would be to go out into the field and rebalance it and put it up in a proper deployment manner. So it could be in the same location, it could be back to one of our nest locations, which is a deployment hub, but the idea being that we want to have our fleet managers notified if a bird is tipped over, so they can address the situation immediately. We've seen success thus far in the recent strategies we've taken and the strategies we've been taking over the course of the program, and I look forward to continue on implementing solutions as additional feedback comes up. Next slide. I did want to include a spec sheet here of the Bird 3, which is our latest and greatest model here at Bird. It's also the bird that we operate in Beaumont as of the program start, so wanted to keep the spec sheet up there, but for the sake of time, wanted to leave it up to question and answer, or at least wait until the comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Samuel.
I'm in, I didn't see anything about accidents.
Yeah.
I've seen a lot of near misses, and I just, I wondered about that.
Yeah. So I checked in with our safety team, who's dedicated to incident responses, and we do have a couple of different manners for flagging incidents that happen, both non-medical and non-medical, both medical and non-medical, through the app and email. And since the program starts from February until now, we've only had one reported medical incident, so it makes Beaumont one of the safer places to ride in Texas. It equates to about 99.99% of our rides not going without incident. Of course, these are reported rates, but comparably, this is higher than average. I mean, it's better than average across the states.
That's surprising, because from what I've seen, I just knew there's been some serious accidents, but fine.
We do recommend that if something does occur, that it's flagged our way either via the city, but there are methods to flag directly to our safety team, and we reach out to the riders directly after that.
Councilmember Turner. I'm sorry. Councilmember Neil.
So, right now, you guys reimburse the city a fee of what?
It is five cents per ride.
Okay. So how does this compare to other like cities?
In terms of revenue share?
Yes, sir.
It's case by case. A lot of the cities I work with don't have a revenue share model. Some might be five cents, some might be 10. So the current agreement right now is five cents per ride.
And when is that agreement up?
I believe it's up at the end of the year, or one calendar year from the signing of the agreement.
Yeah, roughly March, April.
March, April. Okay, and so just to make sure I understood, you said there's only been one medical case filed?
Yeah, reported to us through the safety team, yeah. So not to say that that hasn't, that it hasn't occurred, but what's been flagged our way. We, like I mentioned, do recommend that people flag it our way if an incident does occur, but that's what is on our books.
Okay, so, and I know you have to treat these things somewhat like a bicycle law, but how do we minimize the kids that are riding in the middle of these busy streets, weaving in and out of traffic? This is just not the safest thing I've seen.
Yeah, no, understandable. We do have geofencing technology, where if there is a specific area that is considered dangerous to be riding, we implement a no-ride zone, and we've done that in a couple of different areas, whether it be a park because of pedestrian traffic, the mall because of the cars that are going through the parking lot. But we recommend that the cities flag them our way, and I'd be happy to get them in place.
Okay, and I guess my last concern, I've seen, I've seen several of them left on the middle of sidewalks, kind of bent over or broken. Sometimes they sit there for weeks. What can we do to make sure this stuff's cleaned up quicker?
Yeah, we do have a couple of different ways to report whether a scooter is broken or left on a private property or somewhere it shouldn't be. You can go through the app, Community Mode. It's a great feature where you can take a picture of the bird, and the fleet manager is signified the same way that a tipped-over bird might be, now that we have the implementation of that. But also, I'll provide you guys my contact information, and you can flag things as they come up, and I work with the local team day in, day out, to make sure that things are handled quickly, so I'd be happy to take care of it for you.
So y'all don't have the ability to see if one's been sitting in the same area for an extended period of time?
We do, we do. So basically, every bird has GPS on it, and according to the activity, our fleet managers are supposed to be rebalancing a bird that is in a place that doesn't have high ridership for a couple of different reasons. One, we want the scooters in places that they're gonna be ridden. It's lost revenue for our fleet managers if there's a scooter that's left on the road, either broken for a week at a time, so it's within their best interest to come pick it up, rebalance it, and put it into a spot that's gonna get actual rides. So if it is left there for a week at a time, I do recommend reporting, because our fleet managers, they do come out regularly and rebalance probably once or twice a day, but if something is missing, it could be that the GPS is broken on it, and we need our fleet managers to get out there.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Turner and Mayor Pro Tim Durya.
So I noticed you said you banned Cash App and prepaid debit cards up to $20.
Yes.
$20 still technically isn't a lot of money for a teenager these days. Is there any kind of way we could look at increasing that Cash App or prepaid debit card? Because, you know, $20 to the average middle-school kids, that's not a lot of money anymore, so I think that really should be considered the up, because one of the main things we're worried about is the safety of our youth riding on those scooters. I'm a big advocate of things for youth to do, but I just don't want to see any kids get injured.
Yeah, no, I understand that. Yeah, I would be happy to raise the, raise the preauthorization amount. So Cash App is outright banned. It's the prepaid debit cards that have a limit of $20 right now.
I'm looking at a limit that, you know, probably most middle-schoolers wouldn't be comfortable to have on their prepaid card, so I think that would eliminate a lot of the kids riding as well.
We do want to be cognizant of folks who might be underbanked, who might not have a credit card outright too, because for them, this might also be a service that they use. So it is about finding the right balance, but I'd be happy to up the amount to something more reasonable, if you think that $20 is too low.
What do you think is more reasonable?
I mean, we start with $20, that's typically what we see, and if we still have the problem, we'd raise it to 40, but as of right now, it's at 20. So if you guys are still seeing reports of underage riding, then I'd definitely be happy to up it.
Okay, and my second thing is, I understand you said fleet managers are responsible for picking up the birds.
Correct.
What's the accountability if the fleet managers don't pick them up? Like, is it accountability mechanism put in place if they're still laying on the side of the road for a long period of time? Like, how do we balance that?
We do have KPIs that we hold our fleet managers accountable for, so if they do fall under a certain threshold, we put them on a flight plan. So essentially, their job is at risk if they're not staying on top of it. So we have weekly meetings with them to realign on those KPIs, and if they do dip, we have conversations about them, that, or conversations with them, and typically with ongoing discussions, they kind of get it. We have three fleet managers currently operating in Beaumont, so looking to either bring on more that could have increased, like, KPIs if they do lag after a few weeks or a couple of months, but as of right now, I personally haven't seen the KPIs in the last few weeks, but if there is something that comes up, definitely flag our way, and we can have a more serious conversation with our fleet managers.
Thank you. Do you have any incentives in place for your fleet managers that are performing well, doing everything the way they're supposed to?
Yeah, we do. We give bonuses for hitting certain metrics. If you can imagine, our fleet managers are local entrepreneurs. We bring them on board, and they're essentially running their own business, so they're responsible for the deployment, maintenance, and rebalancing of these scooters day in, day out. So like I mentioned earlier, it's in their best interest to be picking them up and putting them in places that are gonna get rides. So we do offer bonuses for deployed percentages, time and collect, which is essentially a KPI of how long it takes to come retrieve a scooter that's been out, and things like that.
And lastly, I speak, you know, though our city is very diverse in age and population, the median age in Beaumont is roughly 33 years old out here, and I have had a lot of my demographic and age group compliment and say, "Thank you for actually having something that caters to that age group and families out here in Beaumont," so I want to say thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. We wanted to be part of the revitalization. I know there's been a lot of talk today about revitalizing downtown, and we found that offering this service in the downtown area does bring, like I mentioned, business to local businesses, but also tourism. So when you think about getting to some of these museums downtown, I'm more than happy to partner with the museums themselves and offering potentially promo codes or discounts. The idea is to get people out there and utilize the service to get from point A to point B. So we think it's a helpful service to be offering, and we're really happy with how the ridership is going, but keeping, looking forward, keep me updated on any feedback you guys have, and I'd be happy to implement other solutions to address them.
Mayor Pro Tim Durya.
How much, what is your cost of the average ride? How much are they spending?
So it's a dollar to start and about 39 cents a minute or 42 cents a minute thereafter. So if you go, you know, a couple of miles, you assume that it's somewhere between $5 and $8.
Also, you mentioned the no-ride zone. In the no-ride zone, are the scooters unable to operate? Do they shut off, or is just, what happens?
The way that it works is, through geofencing, our GPS system kind of communicates with the backend programming that we have, and once they cross that invisible fence, the scooter's no longer allowed to accelerate. So that's why we created the buffer zone also around the event center, because as soon as it hit the threshold, they were still kind of slowing to a stop on the property, and that's what we wanted to avoid. So with the geofencing technology, they're not allowed to accelerate, and with the no-park zone, they're not allowed to park or end their ride there, so the meter keeps running. So it's in the best interest of the rider to go back to a place that they're allowed to park it, or else the meter keeps running, and typically, they only make that mistake once.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Samuel.
Well, I'm pleasantly surprised. I was surprised that there were no reports of injuries, but more so, I'm somewhat impressed with the management of the scooters that you're doing in Beaumont. I did not anticipate it being quite as sophisticated, but I appreciate it, so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Samuel, I got a reported incident when I fell off, but I didn't report it, so I just want to let you know, there's two, because I fell off pretty hard, man.
Reach out to the safety team next time.
Well, I have a couple of questions that were not addressed. What is your highest revenue share that you pay out? What is the highest that you pay out to other cities?
I, I'm not familiar with the highest, per se, but I, it does have a range. So like I mentioned, it goes from 5 to potentially 15 cents. So, not certain what the highest we've ever done is. I do know that Mike Butler, my colleague who presented and does the contract agreement with you guys, he will probably be a better resource in terms of the contract stuff, but I have seen a range from 5 to 15 cents, maybe a little bit higher, case by case on that.
Okay.
If I may, case in point, City of Austin gets 15 cents.
Thank you. Also, how many units are in Beaumont?
It ranges, we, we have a fleet of about 300 to 350, but they're not deployed all at once any given time, given that, you know, they have to be maintained, charged, et cetera. So on average, we're seeing about 200 to 250 scooters deployed across the four wards at any given time. Obviously, on the weekends, we're gonna be gearing up for bigger, you know, usage of them, so you might see a higher increase of deployment over the weekends, but it does have that range of 200 to 250.
Okay, and because I am of the double age of the average citizen in this city, and I've gotten a lot of reports and a lot of requests to turn it off at dark.
So we do, I did meet with city staff last week and Assistant Chief Plunkett, and we did talk about the operating agreement and the operating hours that we currently have. As of right now, the agreement states that we can operate between the hours of 4:00 AM to midnight. I'm looking forward to working with you guys on something that might work better for the city, but I did pull some of the data, and 30 to 50% of our rides do take place within those hours that would be cut short. So when you think about making this a sustainable program, our fleet managers do rely on that revenue to survive, so it would typically result in either us letting go of one or two of the fleet managers, or potentially losing the program outright. So don't want to be alarmist by any means, but it's a significant portion of our revenue.
So, from dark to 12:00 midnight is your...
And then also from 4:00 AM to 6:00 AM.
4:00 AM to 6:00 AM.
Yeah, so we, right now, between the hours of 4:00 AM to midnight is what we currently operate, and then if we were to cut off, let's say, six hours, four hours after dark, and then two hours before the sun rises, that would be 30 to 50%.
Oh, wow, that's a big percentage.
Yeah.
Do you think they're, they're using them to ride to work?
There are second shift workers that do use this after they get off work, and then also the early risers. So out of the 4,200 rides, we do have about 1,000 commuters, so typically, the commuter profile takes place during rush hour, locally adjusted rush hour of 4:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and then also from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM. So with that, on top of it being a frequent rider route, which is essentially a ride route that they take often on a frequent basis, that's when those rides are taking place, but of the 30 to 50%, I'm not sure exactly how many of those are the commuters, but I do know that it would be affecting them as well.
Okay. And I too would like to commend you for a well-run business, you know, because when you think scooters, you just think it's just a toy, and it's not. I mean, it could be very, very dangerous, and I'm really surprised that it's only been one, and the one that Councilmember Turner didn't report, but I'm really surprised by that, and I would just have to say that they probably did not report it, but there, there are a lot of children that are using the birds, and if there's some way that we could get a handle on the children using it because of safety, you know, because it is a motorized piece of equipment, and it could be very, very dangerous for a child that's operating it. But other than that, I think, public-wise, it's been great. It really has.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You get a lot of ridership around the colleges, Lamar University, LIP?
So when we launched the program, we actually excluded Lamar University from the program. We would typically have to get consent from them to operate on their campus, and I know that we also received some city feedback, that the way down there, there wasn't a safe way to get down there, because I do believe it's just that, it's a college drive, or essentially...
MLK.
MLK. So we didn't see it as a safe way to get down to that, that part of the university anyway. So as of right now, the operating area actually cuts off right before the route down there.
Also, those, these scooters, are, can they be put on the buses, like the bicycles?
I don't believe so, no.
No, because they're public use, if you do take it out of a ride, essentially, I mean, I guess if it is on a ride, you might be able to lift it up. They weigh a good amount, though, I wouldn't recommend it, but if it's out of a ride and you're trying to take it home with you, trying to steal it, it'll actually chirp and notify our fleet managers too. That's part of the anti-theft technology that we have in place, because you don't want people putting it back in the truck and taking it with them.
Councilmember Samuel.
Yes. Are there any of the, I saw the bicycle-type scooters in San Antonio. Are there any of those here?
No, no bikes in Beaumont at the present moment. We've had some supply chain constraints that are, unfortunately, bottlenecking up a lot of the bikes in the Port of Los Angeles, so we've had actually a pretty short supply of bikes this year.
Can we get them?
Potentially in the future. I'll be working with Chris on the next contract agreement and all of that in the coming months, so not off the table, but definitely one of those things that we're at a pretty severe shortage, so.
Any other discussion, comments? Okay, thank you so very much.
Mayor, Mayor, real quickly, just before Michael steps down, I just wanted to comment on, we are roughly just over six months into the one-year pilot program, so we did just want to invite Bird to come and give an update, as they did, and as Michael mentioned, the one thing that is pinned... And as Michael mentioned, the one thing that is pending is the hours of operations, and we'll still be in conversation with them about that and maybe bringing something back to council.
Great, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. City Manager, will you take us into our second work session?
Thank you, Mayor. Second work, work session is to review and discuss Lanier and Associates Consulting Engineers, Inc., Lanier, final report on a conceptual engineering associated with the proposed relocation of the Battleship Texas to the Neches River in Beaumont. So I'm gonna ask Mr. David Coward with Lanier to come forward and present.
Thank you, Senior Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to come and present this conceptual study that we performed for mooring the Battleship Texas at Riverfront Park. We've been here quite a, quite a while. It was good for me to see the council working for the city today, so. Bart told me to arrive at one-thirty, so I was here. I would like to thank Bart and, and his staff with the city for their help throughout the process of this study. As you can see on the first slide that we have up, during our work for the city on the Riverfront Park Rehab Project, we created a 3D model. In that 3D model, we show the, the new work that the city's gonna do here shortly on the Riverfront Park area. You can see in the background, the dock area and the pavilions. So early on in this study, we added the battleship to the model just to give the city a, a nice visual. If you can go to the next slide, please. The scope of our study was to develop two or three options for mooring the battleship at Riverfront Park, develop budgetary costs for each of those options, meet with the stakeholders of the waterway, and then prepare a summary report for the city. And to speak to a lot of the comments that were said earlier, our goal in this was really to try to position the battleship in a manner that would reduce the cost for the city to see it come here, so. So keep that in mind as we go through it. We really looked at trying with our initial first option to try to reduce that cost. Next slide, please. Uh, the stakeholders that we selected to meet with in this initial study, they were selected either for their role on the waterway or for their, because of their proximity to the Riverfront Park. We met with the Sabine Pilots, the US Coast Guard, we met with the Port of Beaumont. They have property immediately downstream and immediately upstream of the Riverfront. We met with Beaumont Contractors. They have their marine yard that's located over by Interstate Ten. So they routinely transit this area with large crane barges and material barges. We met with the Kansas City Southern. They have the Neches River Railway, Railway Bridge that crosses the river just downstream of Riverfront Park. We met with the Sabine Neches Navigation District, because they're the non-federal local sponsor for the waterway. At the request of Port of Beaumont, we met with the Allegiant Industrial, which is the Port of Beaumont's tenant on the property that they have upstream of the Riverfront Park. And then finally, we met with the Army Corps of Engineers. So I'll go through the options now. We created three options at the request of the city, but after discussion with the city, we only presented two of these options during our meetings with the stakeholders. So as I was saying earlier, you know, we took their, this option one, we tried to lay the battleship out in a manner that would limit the cost to moor it here and, and to limit the amount of dredging and, and also limit the change to our Riverfront Park design that we had already performed. As you can see on the slide here, those red dashed lines, those represent the toe of the federal channel, the core channel limits. You can see that the battleship is well within the channel here in option one. This is a very deep portion of the channel. We positioned the battleship in this location based on its draft. The battleship drafts twenty-eight and a half feet. That means how much of the ship is below the deck of the water? So we positioned the inside, inshore side of that battleship on the minus thirty contour. And, and we did that so that there would be no dredging required. As you can see in this option, it shows that we have a vehicular access approach on, to the battleship on the upstream end. We have a pedestrian approach on that downstream end. There's a gift shop and a ticket booth area there next to the personnel access that you see that'll cross over the BNSF rail line that runs along the Riverfront. That personnel access crosses over into the backside of the Civic Center parking lot. The estimated cost for this option one was six point six million.
Mayor. So on the vehicular access and the pedestrian access, the way I understood and understand that this is drawn up is that it's an elevated walkway up above and like, kind of like what Lamar has over the freeway, that's, it's up above, is that...
The, the walkway from the Civic Center parking lot across the BNSF line would be an elevated walkway like that, but not near like what you see at Lamar going across the MLK. It'd be something much smaller, but it would be elevated to the proper height to allow the train traffic to continue under. There would be elevators on either side so that you could have handicap access as well. And then the vehicular access to the battleship itself was more about for maintenance or supplies or things like that. And it was also to give two means of ingress egress, in case there's any kind of incident, excuse me, on the ship, and then you've got two means to, to get on or get off. Those would be basically at ground level, high bank level on the city, and then they would just slope up to the edge of the battleship.
So each of those, if I read it right, cost half a million dollars projected, and you know, that I'm wondering is, could we not just have a simple grade crossing like they have at Pier Twenty-One in Galveston or at KEMA and just not have that elaborate of a walkway? And how, how would that affect the price?
Certainly. I mean, we didn't have a whole lot of input from the city on exactly what to do on the landside portions of it. I mean, really, the goal of this study was to see where we could position the battleship in the waterway, meet with the stakeholders of the waterway to see what would be required from a permitting standpoint. We added these additional features just to, to provide a cost for them. Certainly, if the city thinks that a at-grade approach there would work, then that you could eliminate that cost.
Okay, and then also on the ticket booth, if we wanted, that's a quarter million dollars on your proposed budget for the ticket booth. If we wanted to use an existing structure facility to allow them to take, so we could take that out too?
Yes, sir. Again, we, we just picked a five-hundred-square-foot building and, you know, we didn't have a lot of input on exactly what you wanted to do there.
Okay, and I say these things because I know that cost is something that people are sensitive to. And, you know, if we can eliminate one point two-five million dollars just like that, that might be something that some people are interested in hearing, so thank you.
I don't think it's quite that high, though, Councilman. If you look, it's, the pedestrian access to the parking lot is three-twenty-five in the budget, and then the two elevators are one-fifty. So that's four-seventy-five, and then the ticket booth, as you mentioned, is a quarter million. The other two items are the, the ramps to the ship.
Okay.
And I would like to add, these are very, very conceptual costs that, that were, were done with not a lot of input from a standpoint of the design of what that would look like from the gift shop building, like you're saying, and the pedestrian access over the railway. We just put some placeholders, basically.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Y'all can, you can certainly ask questions as we go, or we can wait until I get to the end, however y'all want to do it.
Well, I'll just let you know, one of my main concerns is having a visual in my mind as to the way it's gonna appear outside. And that's my main concern. So I'm really, at this point, I'm not certain where this is, so help me to get a visual of how that's situated.
If, I guess if you go back to the first slide in the presentation that is in the 3D model, th- this is basically just, not directly behind the Edison Plaza, but a little bit downstream or toward the Riverfront Park from Edison Plaza. And if I go through some of my other options, you'll see a little bit more how we looked at shifting it upstream to actually move it in closer to the Barrage Bayou, I think it is, or Breaks Bayou, and behind Edison Plaza a little more. However, I would like to say, we created this 3D model and we did it for a reason. It's, it's pretty much, I won't, I don't want to say a hundred percent accurate, but we've got the airdraft of the vessel. We've got generally the shape of the vessel. I think we found the, the model of this online somewhere, but we included that in the model, and I provided to the city, to Barton them, several views of that model that would give you a perspective of standing, you know, back here on this sidewalk, excuse me, geez, back here on the sidewalk at those approaches. And the edge of the battleship relative to where you're standing on the ground, back on the sidewalks on shore, is roughly about ten feet higher than where you're standing. So in the perspective of looking at it from, you know, a hundred feet away, you obviously wouldn't see like directly on the other side of the battleship like the, the, the land that the port owns there. But from a standpoint of looking up to see I-ten, you would still see I-ten. So I don't think it's gonna block your view as much as you think.
So that, that was my main concern, and I, initially, I was wondering how to scale this initial photograph was. So we're talking about, so would it actually be having, this is the present site of Riverfront Park?
Yes, sir, that is the pavilions and the dock area of Riverfront Park.
And so the nose of the ship would be pretty much about...
Well, it's, 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 it's about, and I, I don't have it drawn right here in front of me, but it's, it, the battleship itself is six hundred feet roughly in, in length. And it's at least six hundred feet upstream of that pavilion area.
And you say it would be, standing on the level, on the sidewalk, it would possibly be about ten feet?
From the airdraft that's listed on the data sheet for the vessel, the airdraft is the amount of the vessel that's out of the water to the deck. From that dimension, and then the elevations that we have on the high bank of the Riverfront Park area, that's correct. It's about ten feet higher than that high bank elevation.
When we get a little further down to the channel realignment slide, there's an aerial that gives you a little better
Perspective.
Perspective of where the ship is with, in relation to that shoreline. And it has the, the satellite imagery below it, so you can kind of figure out where that's at.
And, and also, these, these slides that we made, they're like a fraction of the drawings that we provided to the city with our report. You know, I made the slides and we kind of took a snapshot of the area that I wanted to present to y'all. So the report that we submitted to you is in much more detail than this, and then it also has eleven-by-seventeen drawings that show the full scale of these things. There's even a graphic, yeah, there's a graphic scale on those drawings that can show you, you know, that you can scale things for dimension, dimensional purposes. We didn't provide the, we didn't provide the, the model shots in the report, but we did provide that to the city early on in the, you know, before this process really started.
Since they're looking, can I ask them something?
Shall I continue with the...
No, Councilmember Turner has a question while you're...
Yeah, go, go ahead.
Yeah, that, that was my concern, since, since they're looking, I was gonna ask a question. I think one of the biggest concerns is, you know, location with all what we plan on doing eventually down the line of the Riverfront to allow activities to do a little bit of everything, so I think that's one of the concerns that everyone's looking at right now.
Yes, sir, understood. And you can tell from this, this model shot that where we have the battleship positioned in this op, this is the option-one location, it's at the, and I keep using upstream, downstream, you know, upstream's toward I-ten, downstream's toward the Kansas City Railroad Bridge. But as you can see here, the, the end of the, the downstream end of the battleship is just a little bit, maybe a hundred or so feet beyond where the end of the bulkhead is that's, that comes along there to stabilize the shoreline of the Riverfront. And then you have about five hundred feet of shoreline that's in the Riverfront Park current design, that is a concrete revetment mattress. All of that is unaffected by this layout. The sidewalks that you see, all of that's currently part of your Riverfront Park rehabilitation project. So this wouldn't really alter anything in that project. We would just add these vehicular access, the pedestrian access, and then whatever y'all decide on for a ticket booth and then the access across the BNSF railway.
Because that, that's as far upstream that you can push it without getting into...
There's some other issues with pushing it upstream. If y'all would like me to continue with the other options, I'll show y'all what those items do.
We're jumping the gun.
On, on this particular option here, the, the land that's up against the ship, where the gangway and everything, the city already owns that land?
Well, this is the, it's, it's the, I would say it's the, for lack of a better term, I'm not sure if the GLO goes up this far, but this is in the river, so it would be probably Texas State Water Bottoms. However, you know, like I said, we've positioned the battleship at inshore side on that minus thirty contour, so we wouldn't have to do any dredging. So the city's property line, I don't think it goes out that far, but that's not really a requirement.
Where you walk on the ship, where the gangway hits the land, that belongs to the city?
Yes, it does. On the land side, it does. We own all the way past the sewer lift station, almost to the point, but not quite, as you go into Breaks Bayou. We own it.
So, so Bart, I'm sorry, Mayor.
So Bart, this baseline, you're saying, this baseline on this photo I'm looking at, we own that as well, right?
Sorry, Councilman, what, what photo are you looking at?
So this baseline that I'm looking at...
There's a baseline on the drawing there. It's just the baseline for our, for our survey. That shaded line on that drawing, like I said, this is a snapshot of, you know, the model is a snapshot of the actual drawing. That shaded area is the BNSF railroad you see on this slide here.
We own almost, there, there's a little section of land right off of, I guess that's Elizabeth over there, that, that we don't own. That's, that's right where you turn to Breaks Bayou, but we own everything up to that.
Yeah, that's why I was asking with location. I think sticking closest to the bayou as possible.
A little bit on options two and three, but we did look at pushing the ship as far north as possible. The problem, as he'll speak to on that slide, is you, you end up adding dredging. So you're going to increase the cost of the project quite a bit if we move the ship north on the, on the shoreline.
If you'll let me go through the next two slides, you'll see the impact.
You may repeat, sir.
I already read it, okay.
Yes, ma'am, option, if, if there's, if, if we're okay with...
I have, I have one other thing on option one.
Okay.
If we go back to that last picture, with the ship actually sitting inside of the federal channel, would that present any type of problems?
Yes, sir, and I'll get to that whenever I go over our summary of our meetings with all of the different entities and primarily the core. The core is not, you know, they, they, they're not allowed to permit that in the federal channel. That's why we met with all the stakeholders that we did prior to meeting with the core. We met with all the folks that we thought would have any type of concern or, or, or even support, so that when we went to the core meeting, we could bring that and share that with the core in the hopes that they would work with us to allow the city to put the battleship in this option-one location to limit those costs. I'll get to kind of what the core told us when... I'll get to kind of what the Corps told us when we go through the rest of these slides here. And then we can have plenty of time for questions at the end. So, option two was the other option that we shared with the stakeholder, stakeholders. This option does exactly what you were talking about. It gets the battleship shifted inshore outside of the federal channel. You can see it's just inside the dash red line. That's kind of borderline really according to the Corps. They want a little bit more distance, but I think we could work with them on it. And they confirmed that we could likely permit this just through the Galveston District. Shifting the battleship inshore to get it out of the federal channel requires a couple of things. One, it, it, it does impact your current Riverfront Park design. As you see, you no longer have that concrete revetment mattress slope that kind of extends up from the end of the bulkhead there on, on the original design. So, we have to put in a deep draft bulkhead that would tie into the city's bulkhead that we have in the Riverfront Park Rehab Project. The Riverfront Park Rehab Project, the bulkhead's designed for like a minus 15. This bulkhead would have to be a heavier bulkhead designed for minus 30 cut to allow that water leveling to get the ship into that position. It's pretty expensive, the deep draft bulkhead is. The area that you see hatch there would have to be dredged down to that minus 30 elevation in, in order to float the ship, the battleship into position. This feature, this option, just like option three, has all of the other features that option one has as far as the approach from the battleship for the vehicle, vehicular approach from the upstream end, the pedestrian approach, and then the gift shop or ticket booth, and then the access over the BNSF Rail. This option was estimated at 21.7 million. If you go to the next slide, please. Option three, we didn't, you know, like Bart said, the city requested that we look at shifting the battleship a little bit further upstream because there were some concerns about, you know, blocking views of things from the Riverfront Park. This shifts it a little closer behind the Edison Plaza. It basically requires all the modifications that option two required with the deep draft bulkhead, the additional dredging. There's a larger dredge volume required because we're shifting it further upstream. The deep draft bulkhead is about 100 foot longer. So, this cost for this option three was 25 million, estimated at 25 million. So, we didn't, this option, we didn't, I'm showing it to y'all, but we didn't show this to the stakeholders that we met with. Go to the next one. So, getting to the summary of our meetings with stakeholders, and I listed all them earlier. In general, all of the stakeholders that we met with were supportive of seeing the battleship come to the Riverfront Park. None that we met with said, "We don't want to see this." Most of the stakeholders outlined their concerns with making sure that we had the proper design criteria for the battleship's mooring system for extreme events like we had in tropical storm Harvey with the severe flood waters. Also for like a, you know, it would need to be designed for like a category five because it's not like a typical vessel that you have moored along the channel. When we see storms that are going to get into our area, those vessels are usually required to leave that facility. This would be a permanent mooring, so you would have to design it for those extreme, extreme events.
Let me, let me stop you right there and ask this question. You're a marine engineering firm. Do you believe you can engineer something to meet that criteria?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do we have an estimated cost for that?
Yeah, I mean, we have a budgetary number in our estimates for that engineering, and I forget exactly what it was. I don't have my glasses to see.
So, it's not part of the 24.5?
No, it is. It's part of the overall cost. So, it's all, all-inclusive. For that option one, I think it was roughly a half a million dollars, 470,000. We just used 10% of the, the construction cost for the, for the engineering. There would be some geotechnical costs, and then we also have a contingency in here because there will be some studies required, some hydraulic studies that we'll have to do that we, and we did for the Riverfront Park study. We had to do some hydraulic studies for scour and different things to, to look at, Harvey-type event and primarily design for a 100-year flood event. In this case, we're going to have to do those hydraulic studies and look at those extreme events so that we can get the loadings, the loads that we would need to design the structures for to hold the battleship in position. But certainly, it can be done and there, that cost is included in that 6.7 estimated cost. We also met with Allegiant Industrial, which is the port's tenant for this upstream property. They did have some concern about option number one because they have some potential future business that was confidential, that could have larger vessels transiting to the property that's just upstream of the Riverfront. We didn't really go into trying to alleviate all their concerns. We were really just trying to meet with all of the different entities that may have a concern so that we would know if we moved forward into permitting, that would be a, something that we would have to address. When you permit anything like this and the Corps puts it on public notice, you get comments back, and in part of the Corps process, the permit process, is you have to respond to all those public comments. So, we didn't really go into it with Allegiant Industrial on whether or not they would have a, enough of a concern to, to object to the permitting, but that would, you know, be something that we would have to address during the Corps permit process. Then we, our last meeting that we had, we met with the Corps, we met him, them here at the city's office. We explained, you know, all of our other meetings that we have with the stakeholders and, and how they were very positive. The Corps, we knew there was going to be an issue with this, but the Corps stated that. They said, "Well, we can't permit it from the Galveston District with it being permanently moored within the federal channel. You would either have to have the channel deauthorized or you would have to do a channel realignment study." So, after we met with the Corps, we got that information. That really kind of summed up our scope of the study, so we prepared our summary report and we submitted it to the city. After the city reviewed the summary report, they came back to Lanier and asked us to add some additional scope to the study to see if we could look a little bit further into the channel deauthorization and this realignment. Go to the next slide, please. So, the additional scope of our study was to develop the channel realignment drawing, and I'll show you that in a second, and maybe this will help you, Councilman Samuel's on, seeing a little bit more of the scale of things, of where it sat relative to the railroad bridge and the I-10. We had to develop an initial dredging cost for realignment. Then we, after we got those put together, we were to meet with the Port of Beaumont and meet with the Corps again. Next slide, please. So, this drawing, and it doesn't show like I thought, that is a snippet of the drawing that Bart's talking about that, that, that you probably have in your packet that shows where I-10 is relative to the port and the, and the railroad bridge downstream of the Riverfront. But the green lines on this drawing represent the, what would be the new channel limit for the Corps. These, this channel realignment does cut into the opposite bank quite a bit. That's a Port of Beaumont property. So, we did a estimate, and this is rough because we didn't have total survey data on that opposite side of the river, but we estimated the dredging costs and the dredging volume. We estimated the cost to be $7 million. There could be potential costs for future maintenance dredging of that portion of the channel if they're aligned that way, but that was really undefined. So, the next slide. After we created that drawing, we shared that drawing, we sent that drawing to the Port of Beaumont. We sent the drawing to the Army Corps of Engineers. We had a call with the Port of Beaumont. We didn't meet with them, we just had a call with them, and we discussed the realignment of the channel there. The port was supportive of the realignment. We didn't really discuss the authorization with the port. I think maybe the council and the city staff did at a, at a later date. Then I had a meeting with the Corps in Galveston, just a lunch meeting with the Chief of Operations of the Galveston District. I showed him the realignment drawing. I explained to him the city's desire to be able to position the battleship in the option one alignments, you know, to reduce their costs or keep costs reasonable. And I asked, you know, what, what the options were. He went back and about a week after we met, he sent us an email that basically outlined the options. And the two options were to either realign the channel or to deauthorize the channel. He explained what each of those options would entail. Both of those options, he explained, would require that the non-federal sponsor, this would be Netus Navigation District, would have to submit a letter of intent to the Corps. That letter of intent would trigger the Corps study. And for deauthorization, that study, they would execute it at the district level, but then they would have to submit it to headquarters, the Corps headquarters for approval, and then ultimately it'd get to a recommendation to be into a Waters Resource Development Act, a water bill. Go to the next slide, please.
Would you tell me, deauthorization of the channel, what does that mean?
It means basically the channel, as it stands now, the channel extends from the, well, extends from the Gulf, but all the way up to just north of Riverfront Park is where the channel, the federal channel ends. That's the federal channel that was established, you know, way back when, when, when they first started establishing the channel. That little section was added in like 1940-something, I think. I, I looked up some information and shared that with Councilman Getz, too. But deauthorizing that section of the channel means that the Corps would just no longer be responsible for it. So, when the federal channel's established, that means that the federal government is going to maintain the depth at whatever it was established to. So, as that channel shoals in or whatever, you're not responsible or any entity around is not responsible to dredge that. The federal government is responsible for maintaining the depth of that channel. So, if you deauthorize it, that goes away. So, now if that section of channel were to shoal in, then someone else is responsible to do the dredging. It wouldn't be the Corps of Engineers.
When's the last time they made that?
It's been a lo, long time. I don't know the date because it's been so long because naturally deep, like right out in front of Riverfront Park, it's probably, you know, in the 70 to 80-foot depth range. That section of the channel from the railroad bridge up to the end of it, which ends just, just south of the Allegiant Island Port property, used to be CBI Island, is authorized to a depth of minus 32. So, it's quite a bit deeper than, at least out in front of the Riverfront Park. Now, up on the upstream end of it, it does shoal in, you know, but they haven't dredged it in a while. The port just dredged their portion that's south of the, the Allegiant Island down to the edge of the federal channel. But as far as the Corps maintaining that area, it hadn't been maintained in a long time. Even the section between the Netus River Railroad Bridge and the Turnin Basin for the channel is where the minus 42-foot depth or minus 40-foot authorized depth now ends. Even that section that runs along the backside of the ports four, five, six, and seven hasn't been maintained by the Corps in a while. The port dredged it the last time it was dredged.
Mr. Carr, part, part of that is that we don't have large vessels going upriver past the KCS Bridge anymore. We have some barge traffic, and there's really not been the necessity for the Corps to do that type of maintenance because the river's plenty deep for barges as it is right now. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Currently, the depths are, are adequate for that type of traffic, and there haven't, there hasn't been any, you know, what I would call ships or larger vessels go beyond the bridge in quite some time.
So, one of the concerns that comes up is, okay, what if you have a Harvey-type of event and it changes, moves soil around, it causes shoaling in? If it's deauthorized, what do you do then? Because you might have a real need for dredging. Wouldn't it be handy to have the Army Corps of Engineers come in and do that? What my understanding is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, like in Harvey, you would expect to have FEMA come in. And even if it's deauthorized, FEMA, as it's done in other locales, can come in and request or even require the Army Corps of Engineers to come in and alleviate that shoaling in. Is that your understanding?
I'm not sure of that. I, I've never been involved in any situation where that was, that came up. I know on the federal channel, the Corps is responsible for it. So, when we had the Harvey event, there was significant shoaling in the Port of Beaumont's Turnin Basin area, and they had to deploy, you know, emergency dredgers to the area to do that, but that was all done by the Corps of Engineers.
Yes, sir.
I do not know, I'm, I'm sure there would be some avenue there with FEMA that you could possibly get some of that dredging done. But if you were to deauthorize the channel, then the federal government's not responsible anymore to maintain it from a maintenance dredging standpoint.
Right, I understand, and I just want to say that, you know, I've kind of pushed this almost a little bit over a year now, and looking at options one, two, and three, I would have tremendous difficulty supporting options two or three. To me, the only viable option is option one, and not realignment, but deauthorization. And, and to me, I think that is something that could be done through support of Congressman Babbin and Weber, who I've spoken with both of them personally about this. And I, and I know that they would carry this to Congress, and you're about to get into how this all works. So, I'll let you finish that.
Yeah, like I was saying, the deauthorization would ultimately have to be in, in, included into Water Resources Development Act bill, and then ultimately, if approved, signed into law by the President. You basically end up with a similar outcome with the realignment as far as dredging goes because the process that the Corps outlined to us for realignment was that if you did this realignment, they would do a study at, at the Galveston District level. That study would determine any new dredging work that would need to be done for this realignment, and it would also determine any additional lifecycle maintenance-type dredging required. All of that cost associated with this new dredging and the maintenance would now become the responsibility of, they just put it as the non-federal sponsor, which is the Navigation District. But I'm sure the Navigation District wouldn't want that responsibility either, but we didn't discuss that with them, but.
So, then who's responsible?
From the process that the Corps outlined to us, it's clear that whether, if you deauthorize it or realign it, they're not going to be responsible for spending money to maintain it anymore or do the initial dredging calls, the dredging of it.
Hold on, I, I've been waiting, man. I've been waiting. Yeah, yeah, you jumped me last time, I've been waiting. So, earlier, I know you talked about the island that was across the street. I just want to document, who did you say, not across the street, but across the waterway? That island, who owns that island?
Well, you have, you have the Allegiant Island, and, and that's just upstream of Riverfront. And that's owned by the port now, the Port of Beaumont. And then the property just across the river from Riverfront, all the way down, really all the way down to the, to the, past the railroad bridge. All of that property is the Port of Beaumont's property.
Okay, my second question, I noticed we were talking about option one. I, I'm, none of the other two options is just insane to me, but the, my second question was, so we're talking about roughly an additional $7 million to dredge and across the way possibly on top of the 6.7 that we're already discussing?
Yes, sir.
And that additional $7 million, we're saying it would be allocated from where? Because that's roughly 14 million altogether.
Understood. I, I'm just reporting.
I know you're reporting. That's why I'm just trying to make sure I'm following. I want to make sure I have the numbers accurate and correct.
Yes, sir. The numbers are accurate. It, the total would be, if you did option one with the channel realignment, it would be the 6.6 plus the 7.
So, basically 14.
And that's just the initial dredging. You know, the fact that we're shifting the channel into the inside part of a curve and only dredging it to the required depth of minus 32 on a river in the inside part of a curve, that's where shoaling tends to happen. You see it on sandbar, you know, if you go to even the creeks, you know. On the inside part of a curve, you'll have this sandbar developed. So, any maintenance dredging that would occur in the future for, in perpetuity, forever, they wouldn't be responsible to dredge that area.
But, so the responsibility is ultimately, I know you're not saying it, but would it fall on the city?
They, the Corps said that it would fall to the non-federal sponsor, which would be the S N D, Navigation District. I'm sure that they wouldn't, the, the S N D would not want to be, to bear that responsibility. So, I'm sure some agreement would have to be worked out if you went that option, that option to realign the channel.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to be honest. I'm trying to be clarity because there's a lot of confusion, and I want the citizens to understand. That's why I want to know, you know, I understand you saying it won't fall on them, but basically it would fall on the city.
No.
No? So, who would it fall on? So who would it fall on?
The Sabine Nature's Navigation District would have that responsibility, and I have spoken with Mr. Reese and the Sabine Nature's Navigation District, and, you know, my understanding is they are supportive of deauthorization, not realignment. I can't support, I can't support realignment, not at that kind of cost. You know, deauthorization is the way to go for this.
Okay, Councilmember Neal, then Councilmember Samuel, and then Councilmember...
But just so I understand, but the deauthorization would still cost us an additional seven million dollars on top of the original six million, correct?
No. The deauthorization would just deauthorize the channel, and then the position you would be in as far as, you know, just, or the entities that want to use the waterway, if there was a Harvey-type event that caused shoaling in that area, then the federal government wouldn't be responsible for dredging it. If you deauthorize the section between the railroad bridge and the end of the channel, which is just upstream of Riverfront Park.
Okay, and I know we're not to the point that we're ready to vote yet, but how can we vote on something when we still don't have all the facts on whether or not the Sabine Nature's is going to even agree with this? On top of that, the Port of Beaumont, making sure we get some type of letter from those guys saying that they support this in the way that we're going to be voting on it. My understanding, both of those entities have previously sent us letters warning the battleship here, but, man, they need to provide, they need to provide a letter to us telling us that they support it, understanding what the, what the risks are with these. There's a big difference between spending six million and fourteen million.
So there hasn't been a motion made yet for approval, but when we get to item number six, the resolution is only to authorize staff to move forward with putting our RFQR bid to obtain it. It doesn't authorize staff to fund or to spend money.
But, and I appreciate that, but my point is, is I don't think we're ready for an RFP until we have some type of letter from the port and from the Sabine.
Councilmember Neal, the problem is, there has to be a starting point, and this is just the first step of a long process. And what you end up having is, when you get into this process, the Army Corps of Engineers is going to do something called a 408 review. Is that right, Mr. Carr?
Yes, sir, I have a few more bullet points, and I'd be done if y'all want me to go through those. I mean, I understand the discussion, and I understand the little bit of the confusion. I mean, you know, one, we're dealing with the Corps and, you know, trying to get information out of them on what it's going to take to do the study and timing and all of those things. So my last few bullets kind of cover that.
And I don't want to jump, because you've been here since one-thirty, but to your point, Councilmember Neal, in that 408 review process, any of these entities has the ability to jump up and shout and say, no, 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 we don't want that, and shut it down, essentially, you know, with the Corps of Engineers. So they will have that ability.
If I could explain a little bit more, I'll try to make it clear.
So I don't want to interrupt, but since we've been here so long, my computer died, so my battery's low.
I think we're okay. I'm at the end of the presentation anyway, so that's, I think that's perfectly fine. So we were talking about the deauthorization, the realignment, and we kind of went over those couple of things. Then we talked to the Corps about the process of the timing of things, you know, how long will this take? How long will the deauthorization or a channel realignment take? They indicated that that process would take one to two years to do either one, realignment or deauthorization. This could possibly kind of run simultaneously, but I don't know that it would. I think the Corps, you know, as far as the regulatory process, because you would still be required to do a Corps regulatory permit for the structures that would be in the navigable water to moor the vessel. That regulatory process generally takes twelve to eighteen months to do, similarly like we did with the Cities Riverfront Project. When I was talking with the Corps about this process, they did mention the Section 408. The Section 408 is a, is a more in-depth review by the Corps of your engineering calculations, so you have to be complete with all of your engineering. You have to have all the calculations done, all the studies, the hydraulic studies that we would do. All of that would be reviewed by the Corps during the Section 408 process to make sure that whatever we're putting in, design-wise and construction-wise, to hold this battleship in place, doesn't fail. So that process would tend to probably make the regulatory process stretch out to that eighteen months. So if they do it in a, you know, simultaneously, great, maybe it's done in the one to two years. If they don't, and they wait to see if you're going to do the deauthorization and then do the regulatory session, part of the permit, it could be, you know, two to three years. So just so y'all are aware of the timing. And so after we got this information, this additional information from the Corps, we submitted a revised summary report to the city that included all of this discussion. Now that is the end of the presentation, so we can do questions.
Okay. Councilmember Samuel, Councilmember Philshaw, then Neal.
Two things, as I hear it, significant, realignment, deauthorization. If it's deauthorization, Corps of Engineers are out. Then it has to be in agreement with Sabine Area, Nature's, and the city as to who's going to be responsible for, what you call that?
Dredging.
No, not dredging, if in the event there is...
The shoaling?
Shoaling.
Yes, sir. A buildup of material.
Yeah, which would require dredging.
Yes, sir, right, correct.
So that's a fiscal responsibility that will be taken on between those two entities, the City of Beaumont and possibly Sabine.
I don't know that. I just, our study, in our study, we talked to the Corps, and they indicated that they wouldn't be responsible for the maintenance dredging if we did a channel realignment. That would have to be coordinated with the local non-sponsor and whoever's requesting this to be done. So I would assume that there would be some type of agreement needed between the city and the Navigation District to address who covers that if it were to happen. The deauthorization would be another story. That would be, there would be no channel, there would really need, there would need to be no agreement to maintain it. However, there is still users of it, and there's still, you know, the potential for another Harvey-type event that could cause shoaling, and then you have problems with the users that we met with, you know, even the Coast Guard that we met with that has, you know, concerns with the yacht club traffic and stuff. So we met with them about that. So if you had a significant shoaling and you no longer had an agreement to maintain any depth in that section of the channel, then you would have an issue.
Okay. So in reality, you're saying eighteen months to three years, and we know it is a long process anytime we're dealing with the Corps of Engineers. And one of the, one of the things that I think is also significant is, if we're talking about development of the Riverfront area, and we know that AT&amp;T is a significant part of this process, then that pushes that down the road also, because you can't do anything, you can't market or even conceptualize what AT&amp;T would be, whether it be existent or nonexistent, without knowing what's going to happen with the channel, correct?
Yes, sir. But just to be clear, Lanier was just looking at the riverside part of it, we weren't looking at the Riverfront.
I understand that, but we have to look at it from a totality of all circumstances.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so back to the original comment that I was trying to make. So prior to today, we were thinking that this thing was somewhere in the six-million-dollar range, and it may still be. So let me first say, and I support working on bringing Battleship Texas to Beaumont if we can make this thing work that's feasible for everybody involved. But with that being said, all this extra expense is adding up and getting pretty expensive pretty quick. But before I'm prepared to make a vote on this today, I would still like to see a letter from the Port of Beaumont and the Sabine Navigation District saying that they would support the deauthorization. And if they, if they can get that to us and deauthorize that thing, if there's nobody upstream of here that needs anything deeper than what's going to be, understanding it's not going to be maintained by the City of Beaumont, then you could possibly get this thing back down to the six-million-dollar range.
Okay, so...
Didn't you mention that there was an entity that said they were looking at something upstream?
Yeah, the porch tenant, Allegiance, yeah.
Okay, Allegiance.
So here's the problem, Councilmember Neal, what you're saying. There is no reason for either the Port of Beaumont or the Sabine Nature's Navigation District to do anything until we actually indicate that we want to do something, and that starts the process. I can tell you, I can represent to you that I have talked to Randall Reese and Chris Fisher, and they're okay with going forward with this, but until we, as a city council, adopt a resolution, which is what is on the agenda today, saying that we want to go forward and do something and bring the Battleship Texas to Beaumont, they don't have any reason, they're not going to go take official action, not even send a letter. You know, there's just no need for them to do that yet. So, I mean, this, we've got to start the process, and the way to start the process is what we're asking to be done today, and that is to adopt a resolution allowing Mr. Williams to do whatever is necessary to get with the Sabine Nature's Navigation District to issue a letter of intent which triggers things to deauthorize that portion of the federal channel. I can't support realignment because that is going to add so much money to it that it doesn't make it feasible. And I can tell you that, according to the Army Corps of Engineers, there is precedent for channels that are not part of the federal waterway, that when they've had an event and FEMA comes in, FEMA has the ability to get the Corps to come in and do dredging. I don't know if you're familiar with that or not, but...
I'm not, Councilman Getz, but I don't doubt what you're saying.
Okay.
And I understand, this is a catch-22, and we're getting into the argument over what comes first, the chicken or the egg, but the, I'm just saying, by having that letter from the port and from Sabine, then it takes one more argument away that we're not going to have to worry about. And if those guys won't provide the letter either now or once we, once we get ready for the letter of intent, I mean, this thing's dead anyways, right?
Well, that's right.
Well, that's, that's right. And so we're not spending any money today. We're not asking to spend any money today. And if we get off into this process and we authorize Mr. Williams to go to the Sabine Nature's Navigation District and say, look, we've asked you to, we're asking you to deauthorize the federal channel, and they say, we're not going to do that, that might put us in a situation where we have to be responsible for dredging, we'll know real quick, you know, that that's just not going to work.
And that's all I'm asking for, is to try to get a letter from them.
And that will happen real early in the process, but we've got to, we, the city, has got to start the process, or there will be no process.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Philshaw, then Mayor Protem Durio, then Councilmember Turner.
I'm not sure you can answer this question. I think there's a consensus on the council for option one at the six-point-five, nine-five million. We're not interested in, in the realignment of the channel, kicking it up to thirteen and a half million. So deauthorizing, you know, seems to be our focus, but then we're concerned about who's going to take the responsibility for dredging that thing in the event of a Harvey and shoaling, as you said. But in your research and your looking, you may not be able to answer this, when was the last time a ship of any significance that drew that much draft went up that portion of the river? When was the last time that took place? Was it in nineteen forty-three with Bethlehem Steel and the ship building for World War II? When was the last time anything of size went up the river that far?
Yeah, Councilman, I didn't, in our, I didn't research that to see, like, you know, when's the last time a ship that drafts that thirty-foot or whatever goes up beyond the Neches River Bridge? In meeting with the Sabine pilots, the new president has been there eighteen years, and he's never taken a ship above the Neches River Bridge, so I know not in the last eighteen years. But I didn't go back and look into the history of it to see when the last movement of a vessel that size went above the Riverfront Park.
So we could be concerned about something that's never going to happen?
True.
It could, but it hasn't happened in a long time.
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Mayor Protem, then Councilmember Turner.
I'm just going to go by this report that we paid you guys to do. Everybody agreed that I want to do option two or three. The conclusion of the report said, according to the Army Corps of Engineer, option one does not appear to be a feasible location. So that's, that answers all of my questions right there. That's all I have to say there.
Mayor, can you, can you address what your understanding is when they say it's not a feasible location? Didn't that have more to do with wanting to make sure there's a secure mooring system for the battleship?
Yeah, well, there was two things. I mean, there was two things. There was the, the fact that when we wrote our summary report, the Corps did say option number one wasn't a feasible option because you would have to do either the deauthorization or the realignment. And I understand, and too, I want to make it clear, none of these options are our options. We were just looking for options to see what was doable for the city to get the battleship here. So when we say in our summary report that the Corps said that the option one was not a doable option, it was relating to the fact that you either had to deauthorize or realign the channel for it to be an option that they would consider permitting. The, I don't even know, this might have been included in the summary report as well, but when I met with the, the chief of operations at the Galveston District, in his email back to us outlining the processes that we would need to do to permit it to be an option-one location, his opinion was that it was in an ill-advised location just because of the alignment of the river. So in the alignment of the river, just like you have shoaling on that inside turn of the river, you have extreme currents on the outside turn of the river. So he was just pointing out that it's an ill-advised location, and you would have to go through that Section 408 process to design the structures and what you have mooring the battleship in that location to accommodate those forces.
And Mayor, if I may, what, what they're saying there is that it's ill-advised as it sits right now. If it's deauthorized and if it is engineered to hold the battleship with the Category Five Hurricane, then they don't have the objections that they do with it being ill-advised. Am I saying that?
Yes, sir. They, the Corps said that they would, they would do the regulatory process and issue a permit if all of these things fell into place. If you had the channel deauthorized or realigned, if you did the regulatory process where you went through the Section 408 and you provided all the detailed design calculations for your studies, for your structures, all of those things, and they were reviewed by the Corps' engineers, that they would issue a permit for this option-one location.
And all these calculations and studies for the 408 deal, they all cost?
They all cost, yes, sir.
And that'll be another expense for us?
It's included in the six-point-seven million.
Oh, it is.
Okay, Councilmember Turner.
Like, I just, just, I just feel a lot more comfortable moving forward, knowing all the facts. And I think, just from my experience of being here, with decisions, with spending money, I want to know the facts before I move forward anymore from past experiences. Even, I know this has nothing to do with you, but even this six-point-seven, the original money we're talking about spending, we haven't discussed where it would come from and who would be responsible for it. And I think that's important because a lot of constituents have called me prior to coming to this meeting, and they want to know, okay, this six-point, whatever option, whatever option I want to do, where's this money coming from? Who's going to pay for it? Who's going to be responsible for it? So I think, you know, it's important prior to moving forward, we just try to make sure the community is understanding of everything, so I think you can attest to that.
Well, and today, all of us received a letter from Senator Brandon Creighton, and in that letter, Senator Creighton expresses not only his admiration for us... in that letter, Senator Creighton expresses not only his admiration for us to seek bringing the Battleship Texas to Beaumont, but he is a member of the Senate Finance Committee, and he expresses in that letter that he is going to collaborate with his colleagues to find the funding in the Texas Legislature to bring the Battleship Texas to Beaumont. Now, every single city that is interested in bringing the Battleship Texas to their venue is faced with the same challenges that we have. They're gonna have to deal with the Army Corps of Engineers, they're gonna have to deal with 408 review, they're gonna have to find the money. Why does Beaumont have the advantage? Because of IH-10's proximity. Ultimately, wherever the Battleship Texas goes, it's gonna go in a location where the Battleship Texas Foundation believes that they can draw the most visitors. It's gonna be their decision where to put the battleship. They would like to come to Beaumont. Bruce Bramlett has said he would like to come to Beaumont. They like IH-10's proximity, but they have to be asked to come to Beaumont before they can come to Beaumont. Again, this is the first step that commits us to no money, but it puts us on the path. It's gonna be a long path. But right now, the Battleship Texas is being worked on at Gulf Carper Shipyards in Galveston, and the state of Texas has spent $37 million to refurbish that ship. And the state of Texas owns that ship, and if it is in the best interest of the state of Texas and the Battleship Texas itself to be in Beaumont, Texas, I believe that it is incumbent upon the state to help finance it to get us here. And you now have a state senator that sits on the Finance Committee saying he's gonna do that. So, all we have to do is start the ball rolling, and that's what we're being asked to do today.
My last question to follow up, another question they asked, and I know you've been the one in contact with them, Mike. If the ship comes to Beaumont, the city of Beaumont isn't responsible for maintaining the ship and things to that magnitude. And the reason I'm asking this in the public setting, 'cause I have a lot of constituents who's been asking me, and I wanna make sure we're crystal clear on.
Absolutely, right. And it's a great question. No, the Battleship Texas Foundation is charged with operating and maintaining the ship. That will never fall on the shoulders of the local taxpayers. It's not like in Orange when they brought the destroyer Oerlik over there and obligated the city itself to do the maintenance. Completely different situation, and no, we will not have to worry about the maintenance of the ship. And, you know, the other thing is, we, we keep talking about how much it's gonna cost to get it here. There's also been a stu, an economic impact study done by Deloitte, the accounting firm, and that study shows that the city that gets this ship is going to realize an immediate annual economic impact of $10 million a year. Not just the first year, but every year. And that math works to me. I would spend $5 million to get 10 every day and twice on Sunday. I mean, you know, that's, that's just, the return on investment would be large.
Councilmember Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so I'm down to two questions that I have left. Councilman Getz, would you still support this project if you had to spend an additional $7 million for dredging?
No.
Okay, so, and you may wanna plead the fifth on this one, but I'm gonna ask the question anyway.
Wait, Councilmember Neil, let me, why is there so much chatter going on in the audience? I, I don't understand. The decorum policy here needs to be enforced.
Thank you, Councilmember Getz.
So, my question is, in your expert opinion, do you think the Sabine Navigation District and the Port of Beaumont would support this, with deauthorizing the river right there?
I can't speak to that, Councilman. I can't speak to that, I don't know.
Let, let's ask Bart if he has any insight into that at all.
I haven't discussed it with either of them. We did send a, an email off to Sabine Nature's Navigation District about a week ago, but we haven't gotten anything back from them. I think you have the most direct contact with both of the people and the organizations at, at this point.
Yeah, and I'm just one councilmember, so, you know, I'm out here, you know, doing a lot of this legwork, but both of them have said until the city actually indicates a desire to move forward.
Well, I will, I will say that you are correct. That's my understanding as well. I believe the port and Sabine Nature's Navigation District is looking to the city to commit to getting the ship here, um, to ask them to deauthorize something or even take the first step on that until they know that we're serious about bringing the ship here, and they're not gonna step out ahead of us. What we're asking in the item that comes up next is, do you want us to proceed with developing a proposal to get the ship here and do the things necessary such as get the letter of intent from the Sabine Nature's Navigation District? Once we get that together, we'd have to come back to you with what the contents of that proposal are, what the financial ramifications are for approval from council. But at this point, we need something official that says we should move forward and actually initiate official steps to get the proposal together.
And, and that's why there's no recommendation by the administration. I think the administration is looking to council for direction, consensus, and whether or not we even wanna move forward. Because if, if we don't, then we just need to go on to something else. And if we do, then we need to let the partners, the port and the Sabine Nature's Navigation District, know that we're serious, we wanna go forward, and believe me, they will tell you real fast, if they have a problem with it, they'll let you know, and that's the end of it.
Okay, Councilmember Getz, Charday from the port is here, she's sitting here in the audience, and if you could come and just give us some type of clarity or?
Sure.
Thank you, Charday.
You're welcome. The Port of Beaumont plans to, to make a decision in the direction that council sees fit. So, as long as we know there's consensus among council, then we are on board with the plan that you propose. But first, we would like to know that everyone is in favor of what is being proposed as far as the Battleship Texas coming to Beaumont.
Okay, question, Councilmember Samuel?
I can, I can state my position, I probably know that. I am not in favor of the, of moving forward with, what was it? Deauthorizing the federal channel. I think that that opens too much risk to the city of Beaumont and its citizens without knowing. Uh, I, I think I'd rather stay the course, and I'm not in favor of moving forward with trying to get the battleship.
Okay. Councilmember Neil, do you have any questions for?
So, you're saying that the Port of Beaumont would support the deauthorization?
We would support your efforts.
Okay, thank you.
Deauthorization?
Exploring that as an option, yes.
So, exploring it doesn't mean that it would?
Right now, as was stated before, there's barge traffic, limited barge traffic using that part of the channel. Barge traffic requires about 15 feet of draft. Uh, we believe there will be increased traffic at the Allegiant Terminal in the future, but we would work with y'all on the direction that you, you see fit for this project.
So, okay, for me, it, it's not about the direction we see fit, it's the direction that it has to go. Because if it's not deauthorized, then we don't have the position to put the ship. And option one is not an option. It's not doable. So, if it's not doable and the deauthorization is not available, then Sabine Area Corps would have to step in, right?
Sabine Nature's Navigation District.
Sabine Nature's Navigation.
Yes, and they would work with the city to determine who, or whatever entity they would work with to determine who would cover the cost of that dredging.
So, we're back to Councilmember Neil, Neil's question or statement. Right. It's almost like we're putting the cart before the horse because we don't know that they will take that responsibility, and we can't take that burden and put it on the taxpayer.
So, I would just like to restate that the resolution, that there's obviously no motion on the floor, but the resolution that's before council for approval is to authorize the city manager to seek a letter of intent for them to deauthorize, for the, the city manager to see, um, if, if it's even doable. There's, this, the resolution approval doesn't commit council to any funding. It's only to see, one, does two things. It gives staff direction that council would like to see the project here, it authorizes the manager to take the necessary steps to see what it's gonna take for it to get here, and then at some later date, once we have all the numbers and figures and we, we've spent the additional funding to see what Lanier and what the options are, it will be brought back to council at some later date for our funding purposes. And at that time, council can decide, just like any other capital project, to decide to fund or not to fund, to, to move forward or not move forward with the project. But the resolution that's before council today, it's only to, one, express interest in having the project here and get a consensus of council, there's, if there's a need for, for staff to continue to spend resources and efforts to do that if that's not the will of the council, and then B, to authorize the manager to, to do those steps to get it here.
And Mayor, so, following up on what the city attorney just said, we will know quickly, quickly, whether or not the Sabine Navigation District is on board with this or not, because when we go to them and ask if you will go forward with a letter of intent, they're gonna say absolutely or heck no. So, we will know.
Councilmember Philsho, Councilmember Samuel.
Again, a question you may not be able to answer. I'm not an engineer, but we understand that the barges take 15 feet. What's the present depth of the channel in that area?
Right adjacent to the battleship, it's probably 70 feet.
Okay, so, to fill that in where a barge can't go up that river, I, I'm assuming it would take an event, even Harvey didn't do that, correct?
Correct.
So, to go from 70 to less than 15 feet?
Yeah.
That's apocalyptic, isn't it? I mean.
Correct, but I would say this, the federal channel extends beyond the battleship up to, around and just south of Allegiant Island, the porch property, and that area is quite a bit shallower. It's in the 20, 20 to 25 foot range probably.
And where is that at? Again, say that, I'm sorry?
As you go up around the curve here, past the battleship, it's just south of the Allegiant Island property that the port owns.
Okay.
It's but right at the end of the federal channel. It ends right there at the, south of that island.
And that's where the federal channel ends anyway?
Correct. As far as what the Corps is responsible for maintaining. The waterway goes, you know, forever.
Mayor Protim, Duryo.
Uh, Councilman Getz, the 37 million that the state's spending, it was our understanding that that was just gonna repair the ship from the deck up, so it's still gonna need some more work done from the deck down?
It's the deck down.
It's from the deck down.
They're making sure that it, it floats and it's not gonna leak.
But then it's still, it won't be ready for tourists.
The deck up is as is. There's, there's no work in this dry dock for anything above the, the waterline.
But, but to that point, the Battleship Texas Foundation is even now currently doing renovations on the guns. They're doing the sandblasting and the painting and taking them apart and putting them back together. Uh, they have money that they have raised to redo the decking, but even as the decking is right now, they have had events and they will continue. They wanna be open, believe me. That's their, that's their bank account. That's, that's how they generate revenue, so they wanna be open.
When they were here earlier, they mentioned something about us having to, I don't see it on this picture, like build a, a dock for the museum and the gift shop and all those.
There, again, we're getting kind of ahead of ourselves, but I.
But I'm just trying to, like, as we go forward or if we go forward or before we go forward.
I, I will.
Making the people aware of all the costs that are gonna be involved with this, not, not just the 6 million or the 13 million, 'cause it's gonna be some more costs involved with this.
I'm not, I'm not gonna support the 13 million with a realignment, but let me share with you that there have been discussions with private entities that have offered to donate buildings within a block and a half of where the battleship would be that will suffice for the Battleship Texas Foundation and museum costs. So, that will be something that will be worked out. But again, there's no need to even pursue those conversations until we take the initial step saying we wanna go forward with this.
Also, if we continue on doing, will Lanier, will you guys do part of the calculations and studies for the 408? Will you still be involved if we move forward?
That would be entirely up to the city, and I'm sure there's processes that they have to go through to select an engineer to, to do that work, so.
Councilmember Samuel.
Yes, okay. I, I, I think we're moving beyond the mere fact that we're looking for, you're saying, first, we have to let our intent be known, uh, but in supporting the RFP, but that's not what it's coming down to. It's gonna come down to whether Sabine Area Council, um, they're gonna take on a part of the responsibility in the event something happens. That's what's gonna have to be done. So, with that, that pretty much gives me an idea of what's gonna, the positions that's gonna be taken. But what's more important to me now is, how much time and effort and billable hours are we putting on city staff when they can be doing something else other than going down where we believe this is gonna go? Because either we're gonna, it sounds like more money will have to be spent, or we're gonna have to take the, it's gonna have to be, uh, de. Deauthorized, which would put the city at risk for spending more money. And if that's the case, I don't think anybody's here is wanting to do that. So, are we gonna send staff down this trail to just do all this? For what? And as we're doing this, we're pushing the development downtown further down the way.
Councilmember Sam, Mayor Mayo?
Let me get Councilmember Neil, and then I'll come back to you.
Sure.
To, Mayor, to try to get this thing off of high center, I think what several of us on council would like to see is if we could authorize the city manager to see if we could not go get a letter of intent from the Sabine Navigation District and the Port of Beaumont saying they authorize the deauthorization. And I think if we had that as the first step, I think it would make it a lot easier for us to all move forward.
That is the step. That is exactly what the resolution said. That's, that is exactly it. Well, we have to close the work session and then read item number six.
Well, do you, you're okay? Okay.
And, and calling for the vote, we're not spending no money. I just wanna make sure we're 100% clear.
The resolution does not allow for spending money.
I just wanna make sure, yeah.
And, and the charter does not allow for the manager or any staff member to spend money that is not budgeted for, that is not a budgeted expense, so that, so no money unless it's been brought back to council.
Okay.
Okay, so, work session, oh, the city manager.
Ms. Ray said it is better than I could twice. So, basically, this is just giving us authorization to, to look at necessary steps going forward. It's not really committing. It's letting us know if you're interested in the project. If so, go out and find us some answers to some questions. Bring us back the information that you want, then you can make the real decision later is, is what you're doing. With any of these projects, there's pros and cons, you know, there's, you're gonna be probably responsible for more than you think before it's over, but it is an opportunity to provide economic development enhancement to, to Beaumont, you know. There, there are things that, these are, these type things can be a destination. It creates a destination for your city for people to come and draw, draw people. So, there are pros and cons, and so it's my job to tell you about them. You'll probably spend more than you want, but you, you could reap benefits more than you expect at the same time. But this gives us authorization just to go forward, give, give you more information to make the decision you really need to make going forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager. With that said, may I have the reading of item number six, please?
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you so very much, and thank you, Charday.
Okay, item six, consider authorizing the city manager to pursue.
Okay, item six, consider authorizing the city manager to pursue activities necessary towards developing a formal proposal for berth in the Battleship Texas and Beaumont on the Neches River.
Okay, you've heard the reading of item number six. May I have a motion, please?
A move that we authorize the city manager to go forward and, uh, take whatever activities necessary towards developing a formal proposal to, uh, berth the Battleship Texas in Beaumont and the Neches River.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Neil?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to say it for the third time. The, Mr. Manager, before we spend a bunch of other time on this project, can y'all please start out with the Sabine Navigation District in the Port of Beaumont, getting a letter saying they support this?
Sure.
And that they support the deauthorization of the channel.
Sure, we, we can do that, and it's important we do that. Uh, it's important too that we work as a council. I know council member has gone and have those, had those discussions, but people will say it's not the entire council. So with the staff being able to work that, I think we could be in a better position.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of, oh, Mayor Protim Durya?
I don't like the way that this reads. I would say it would say authorize the city manager to talk to the Port of Beaumont and the Sabine Neches Pilots Association and get, and get their input on this. I think that's how this should read, not, not, not how it reads now.
Can the city attorney get that?
The reason I phrased it that way is that my understanding from both entities is they want to see if the council is supportive of bringing the ship to Beaumont.
Yeah.
And with that, we can reach out to them and ask them for that letter of intent, ask them to consider deauthorization of the channel. But they want first and foremost to see whether you, as a council, want to bring the ship here.
Yeah.
And, and that's why I phrased it this way.
Yeah, and in the, the resolution, the way the resolution is worded, it specifically says that we're, we're getting a letter of intent from the Sabine Neches Navigational District. And, and working with the, the Army Corps of Engineers. So, so the, the memo is separate from the resolution.
If, if you send me to Sabine Neches Navigation District and it just says ask them for the letter of intent, quite likely I'll be back here saying they want something official that says that you, you support bringing the ship here.
Yeah, and so just to be clear, the, that's, the resolution does two things. It, A, gives council, or it expresses council's intent to want to see the project come here. And B, it authorizes the city manager and staff to start seeking out, uh, those things necessary to secure the bid for the Battleship Texas to do here. It does everything that's necess, that's necessary to, uh, get the Battleship Texas here with the exception of spend money.
Okay, Councilmember Turner, then Councilmember Samuel.
So doing the study doesn't show we, uh, you know, interested in the Battleship Texas?
No.
Like, the study costs money and we voted to do the study.
So you voted to do the study to see, like, what the interests would do. But in a lot of situations, and I'll just bring you back to some of the things that council's done in the past. For example, when we have individuals come forward and they want to supply or seek grant funding from the state of Texas, council has to provide a resolution in order for them to do that, so that they can show that they have council support to bring that, that building or that entity here. And one, one case in point is the, the senior living facility that's being built on Bealan. If you remember, that individual came forward before council and said, hey, we need your suppo, uh, council's vote of support in order for us to apply for this grant funding to bring this program here. A lot of times in a lot of situations where council has to show first their interest and support is by a resolution. Uh, the resolution that you voted for Lanier didn't show a support for the project. It only showed a support or authorized staff to go for and get a, essentially what the cost would be. But resolutions, um, for council in this magnitude show to another entity that council has both expressed an interest and authorized a staff to do something saying, my council is in favor of bringing it here. Now, that doesn't mean that when the numbers come out that council's position cannot change. We've seen several times where council has changed its position on several, um, items when the final price tag has been brought forth. So council can still say, no, we don't want to fund it, because this resolution doesn't fund anything. This isn't a line, this isn't adding another line item to the budget. This, this isn't giving staff any ability to move forward with making monetary, um, taking monetary action. All it does is just allow staff to say, my council has voted in favor, and then seek other options from other entities in that manner.
All right, thank you.
And I guess to, to just shortcut this all the way, if I came to you and said that I could wave a wand and bring the ship here and place it on the Neches River for $0, do you want it?
Councilmember Samuel.
That would be a perfect one, except, uh, you could say $0, but not increase liability. And I think that's what this comes down to. By saying that we want to pursue to find out, we're asking staff to do additional, spend additional time, and it's going to come back that we're going to either have to deauthorize, uh, the federal channel or we're going to have to spend additional money. And either one of those would not be acceptable to me, because one increases liability, the other increases costs, and that's not what, so I will be voting against this for that reason. Even though I would love to be a team player, but in my, deep down, that's just not for me.
So, Councilmember, Councilmember Neil? Okay, Councilmember Gitz.
So we're not going to increase our liability if the Sabine Navigation District says, hey, we're not going to do this, because it increases our liability. You know, we will have the ability to say at some point, we will respond to whatever the Sabine Neches Navigation District does. This just gets the ball rolling.
If it's deauthorized, that does increase liability.
But it doesn't necessarily increase liability to the city of Beaumont. It increases liability to Sabine Navigation District. And if the Sabine Neches Navigation District says, uh-uh, we're not going to go that game, then we will have to have that conversation.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, you've heard the reading, we have a, um, a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Nay.
Thank you. Okay. Now's the time for public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room. Hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name at the beginning of your, uh, she'll call your name. The green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes. The red light will come on at the end of your three minutes. It is now 5:28, so please, when your red light come on, please stop. Thank you.
Joanne Harvey, 4481 O'Dallin Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening. It's good to be here. Good evening, council. This is my first time coming before the council for any reason at all. I just recently moved back here from Arlington, Texas, and there's been a lot of things said here that, uh, by living away from here, I can see where a lot of their comments are needed here in Beaumont, like, uh, the sound system for bad weather, because in Dallas, we hear horns blowing when the weather's coming, you know, and everybody knows to take cover, you know? So, um, I am a Beaumanner, I love this city. Uh, but I'm here, oh, and anything that brings revenue to this city, I'm for within a certain limit, because we do need more tourism, more revenue for this city. I came back here and I was very disappointed with the way Beaumont looked. I love this city, I'm, I was born and raised here, I'm a Hebronite. But, uh, I'm here because, um, as a senior citizen living in a senior community, uh, we have had a lot of dispute with management and I think some overlooked areas in our city that has not been properly addressed or, um, covered and taken care of. There is no tenant advocacy here. And everything seems to lean toward the landlords, but the tenants have really no project management to manage the way these developments and these, uh, communities are, are handled. They sit down with a closed lip, they pay their rent. Some of them are really overcharged, they're, uh, undermanaged, uh, undermaintained, and you just have to live with the squabble, whatever you, I mean, it's really bad here in a lot of areas, and we need a tenant advocacy here. We don't have that. I, when we were in Dallas, I was part of the tenant advocacy. We had to pay a fee to join, and if you had any disputes, or you hear the disputes of the tenants, but these people are so used to being just abused and misused, they just sit closed lip because they don't know no better. This is ridiculous. And I'm coming before the council to find out how and if we can get a tenant advocacy in Beaumont to help overlook all of these rental facilities. I just came down 105, I was taking my son to Dallas. I have, my granddaughter's an attorney, by the way, and she is a contract attorney for a very important modeling company here, but I'm just, I'm just in awe in the way that management feel like they can just do anything and nobody's going to say anything. I just wanted to know and how and help develop a tenant advocacy, that's what I'm looking for.
Thank you.
For tenants in Beaumont.
We appreciate your comment.
Thank you, by the way, by letting me speak, I will be back.
John Richardson, 6066 Afton Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
Thank you all for listening to me today. I know it's been a long day for everybody. I'd really appreciate y'alls listening, even though we're all tired. Excuse me. I want to talk today about the coyotes in the canals all throughout Beaumont. Um, I've seen them at the corner of Edson and Gladys. I've seen them near my old house, By Klein Park. And just last week, uh, one of my cats was mauled on our front porch at our home off of Dallin Road here in town. And, um, I would just like to get with y'all to see if there's any, anything that the city might be able to do to figure out how to, um, catch some of them and maybe relocate them to a shelter or to, um, put out something that might deter them from attacking other pets, because I suspect Charlie is not the first, uh, pet in this town that's been mauled by a wild animal at their home on their porch. But I'd like him to be the last. Our pets are our family, and I'm one to protect them, they deserve to be protected. So I want to challenge y'all to see if you think this is a serious issue. Maybe other people have complained before, um, but, uh, this is me wanting to bring it to the city council's attention.
Thank you so very much, and I'm so sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Jeanetta Price, 8035 San Bruno, Beaumont, Texas.
She's not here.
Uh, Robert Benoit, 50, 535 East, uh, I'm not sure what the address is. I'm sorry? Simmons, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayo and Councilmen. Um, I'm here again, speaking on the Beaumont Police Department. On December 24th through February 3rd, 2026, they kicked my door in 35 times. Beaumont Police Department, Wilfley, New Orleans, and attempted to harass me, discriminated against me physically, attacking me by pulling me out of my bed, throwing me on the floor aggressively, and putting me in a patrol car and then later releasing me, which I am disabled, violating my privacy of my home, illegal search and procedure of my home, racially targeted me and had me incarcerated for nine months for a crime I didn't commit, all without an legal search warrant from the judge. This is what I call home invading, plus violating my 48 and 14 constitutional amendment. The only difference between gangsters and the Beaumont Police Department is that they have license to be gangsters and have racial acts against blacks. I asked this sergeant with the Beaumont Police Department why they was harassing me, and he said, because I had white roommates at my house, when I had the right to have anyone at my house that I pleased to have, as long as they're not, uh, doing anything illegal. I would like to know, does a person who fought for the United States Army in other countries has a right to be violated in such manner? I'm a disabled veteran and, uh, I have lost a lot of, I lost property. I lost a lot of goods in, in the process of this year. Uh, I was like, my character, uh, my name was blamed in the street, you know, for the crime they committed me of, was a rape charge. I know no man would want to, uh, consider to be a rapist when he never did it. So, uh, you know, they really took me down a whole lot in this here, and you know, it was, had all my furniture stolen out my house, had to start all over again, you know, it just, you know, they, they took me down. I, I really wasn't doing that, but just trying to help some people that didn't have no homes out the harbor, you know? And that's what I do, I try to help those that were homeless and things like that, you know? And, uh, only love one color, and that's human beings. I have no, I've been through military and everything else, so I don't discriminate or, I'm not racist against anyone.
Thank you, thank you for your service to our country.
Latasha Q., 93, 45 Westgate Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
I know you all are tired of hearing about my fraudulent scheme case, but I have to do what I have to do. Last week, I learned that there was another judge that was recused from my case. This makes the third judge now, within three weeks or so, that's been recused from my case. The initial judge had threatened to make my situation worse. He was telling the lawyers, they was, thought they were speaking off the record, as I've mentioned a few times before, and, um, they're in a lot of trouble. Because I have some people outside of Texas that's been looking into this matter for several months, and they're, they're in the process of taking action now. So I go and talked to the court coordinator yesterday for the second judge, who recused himself from my case after just two days, to try to see why he recused himself, and she said she didn't know the reason why. And she suggested I talked to the administrative judge to see why he recused himself or to see, um, who the third judge would be. The judge said, well, I sent the case over to this other judge, I'm not going to mention his name, I understand y'all have adopted new policies. And he said, well, he didn't want the case, he has a conflict of interest. He told me who the new judge would be, the fourth and final judge. And I told him, I said, well, I don't think it's fair that my case is assigned to him, because he's in the same chambers of the exact judge who threatened to make my situation worse. He said, well, what you could do, when you get the order, Monday or Tuesday, just file a motion. But I've already talked to my people about this whole ordeal, and they advised me as to what I should do next, and won't be filing a motion on this matter, at least not for that part of it. And some other things happened. My case just get even more and more corrupt by the day. I was advised by the police department, the sergeant that's handling that part of my case, the theft charge with the $39,000 check that my former attorney cashed illegally. And he advised me to request the cash check from either the lawyer or the, um, advance company, because I had taken out a loan against my lawsuit. They came very defensive. And then when they finally did send me a copy of the check, it was a half check. I'm like, wait a minute, how do you send someone a copy of half of the check? And they're telling me, well, that's what was sent from your attorney. Well, like I told him, he's no longer my attorney, I terminated him when I found out he stole my check, cashed it illegally. Open my email today, they're actually threatening, actually against me, accusing me of things and accusing me of harassing their staff for months. I'm like, oh, you kidding me? I contacted your office Monday as I was advised to.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll continue next week.
Tony Renfro, 6110 Bankston Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
Maybe I should have spoken before at the public session. Good afternoon, councilman and mayor, Muton and staff. Like I said earlier, I should have spoken earlier about the battleship, but I want to also piggyback on Chris. Chris spoke on some things that I want to speak about that's really valuable, and about the demographic of our city. However, now that you have placed a vote on pushing ahead or to authorize the city manager to pursue the necessary steps in bringing a battleship to Texas to downtown Beaumont. I'm not, I'm not objective of it. It's a great move, but however, there's cost. And so, reason why I'm saying is that I have no objection that the city would like to draw the attention to the downtown area by bringing in new businesses, more attractions, new venues to the downtown area. However, the city has more pressing needs than to invest in a battleship. We've already having millions of dollars invested in the 555 Main Street building. I ask you today, councilman and madam mayor, to refocus your attention and reconsider the more pressing needs for our city by pursuing spending our tax dollars to making improvements for a better drainage, streets, and cleaner running household water than to waste our tax dollars on a battleship at this present time. Let not waste more of our tax dollars on another dead end investment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Matthews, 3875 North Major Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon again. Trying to move real quickly. The bird scooters, I had a thought, what about some of the teenagers that do have like a driver's license or permit and have access to operate motor vehicle? Just a question, I thought. I went through the Citizens Police Academy, and I got a chance to tour the Beaumont Emergency Management, and I want to give kudos to that lady that came spoke earlier today. Very sharp lady, she knows a lot of information. They do a lot of things that people aren't aware of that take care of us whenever we have any emergency situation. I want to speak again, again to this battleship concept. Y'all paid money to them for doing that study, in which it was, it was poor in my opinion. I mean, there was some information, helpful information there, but they couldn't have used a drone to get like an aerial view to help us with a better visual concept, like, I don't know, this is just some things that I was just thinking about. But that work session, in my opinion, it would be cheaper to bring a permanent circus to Beaumont, like honestly, you know, and that, that's kind of what it was in my opinion. Like, it's almost like the stars have to align to get this battleship here, and it's, it's too much trouble. They showed some of their options, and it was very costly, very costly, and I think it's going to be way too much trouble. City Councilman at large, this is what you're advocating for? Like, we have a larger demographic of Beaumont that have larger needs. I came here before, a few months ago, and I asked you about EDC, and you have not done anything in that area, and you said in your campaign that you wanted to grow Beaumont, and this is what you're working on? Seriously? I, I bet you haven't contacted the lady that was over the port off of EDC. I gave you her contact number, I bet you haven't done that yet. Like, come on, man. I told you it was going to be a long campaign, and I'm going to be on your head the whole time, and I mean that. Like, you've got to do better. You honestly have got to do better. You're wasting time and energy with stuff like this. It's too much trouble to bring the Battleship Texas here. One more thing, the guy that mentioned the coyotes, I drive down, I live on Major Drive, I drive down Northwest Parkway, I see coyotes a lot, so he's not lying. The gentleman that owns a lot of property over there, the same gentleman that come and said that the city manager's going to have to prove himself, that's his property. He should probably be taking care of that issue. Thank you, you guys have a nice day.
Thank you.
Frederick Fugelier, 4955 Aitish Street, Beaumont, Texas.
I'm here, I want to address the battleship issue also. Back in December of last year, the, when we first brought this battleship up, one of the cost estimates was $10 million, and everybody, ooh, that's way out of range. Now all of a sudden, it's at $6.5 million, and that's the cheapest we can get it, and that's not going to get us out of our liability. I'm pretty, I'm well aware of what you voted on today, just to move city management, that the city management moved toward looking at what it's going to take to get this ship here. I only see one councilman that's pushing for this ship. I see six, none of them, that all they had was questions on why it shouldn't be here. I don't know why the vote wasn't six to one against this, but we could save the city management's time and stop even fooling with this foolishness. But let's go through what we got here. We always want to compare where other ships are and what they do. All of these other ships that people are comparing, there are parks there, there are museums there, there's not just some raggedy ship. Councilman Duryo asked Councilman Gitts about the money to refurbish the top of the ship. That's not being paid for yet. Councilman Gitts says that it is going to be paid for by somebody. Councilman Gitts has a lot of stuff that he's selling us, but has he brought any documentation to any of you? Have any of you seen all these conversations since he's had with all these people that's going to back this port, going to back this bill? No, none of you. So let's stop right there. What we do know is that the idea plan that the, the Lammer, I think the name's, brought would cost you $24 million, and you'd be out of all any liability, and you'd have the ship docked just where it would satisfy everybody. The minimum plan is $6.5 million, and we don't know what kind of liabilities we're buying. So we need to think about what we doing here and quit wasting our time, because that's all I'm seeing here is a whole bunch of wasted time. I asked for, the minimum cost back then, when we said it was $5.2 million, now we know it's six and a, it's six and a half. The maximum would be 10 million, the maximum would be 24 million if we did it right, but we don't want to do it right. We're going to cut counters, and then we're going to go begging the government to come help pay us if we have a storm that makes us have to dredge the channels out. So I am asking you, I know what you voted on today, and you've already committed resources from, from management to move forward, but I wish you would quit wasting our time and money. Thank you.
Before you call the next name, I would like to remind the public that council and staff should be referred to by their titles and not by their first names, that is part of our council decorum rules.
Thank you.
Addie Allen, 9695 Cross, Beaumont, Texas.
I've already greeted everyone. Very short comment. CFR 42, Code of Federal Regulations, is the emergency preparedness code. And one of the core elements that I was speaking of earlier is a communication plan. And what I heard in the presentation, there is communication, but verbatim it said, businesses and governmental entities are notified, and I'm saying, what about citizens? So, the auditable sound, and there are other cities that are doing it, it's alarm systems, sentry, there's about four I found, and, you know, if you'd like to have it, I have the information to pass on to staff, and they can move it forward, because we're in the hurricane season. You know, God bless the people in Florida. We have not been hit that hard, but it's a possibility, because you're talking about the Battleship Texas and, you know, water, waterways. It can happen. So, you know, God bless us that we do the right thing to preserve life and health, and communication is the key, because you are our communicators, and you are the ones that are looking out for us. You're our voice, and we need you. I need you. I said it last year, not in the same way, but I'll be back here next year if nothing happens and if God spares my life and health. So please take into account with staff to look at this preparedness and have something that will let citizens know. We can't depend on AT&amp;T, we can't depend on Spectrum, we can't depend on Stan because all the towers may go down. Thank you. God bless you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
EJ Shepherd, 4710 Cleveland, Beaumont, Texas. I guess he left. Kenneth Earls, 1265, I think that's Condon, Beaumont, Texas.
I'm sorry, I had a stroke. Retired fireman from the city of Arlington. The young lady just spoke before you. We have alarm systems all across the city. We can't depend on AT&amp;T or Spectrum like she said. You have to hear those alarms go off in Dallas, Fort Worth, Arlington, and you'll understand that when a tornado come, or even a hurricane, or any other major disaster, that that's your first, your first opportunity to get out of the way of whatever's happening. Number two, Representative Duryo, I know that you're a retired fireman, and the EEOC that was up here, the manager, have we sent fire and police to Florida to do a study and bring back to Beaumont that information so that we can protect our people even from getting out of here, which was a disaster in 2008, when we had to go down, where people from here had to go down I-45 to Dallas, and it took three days. We need to have a better way of getting our people out, Port Arthur, Lumberton, Orange, we all can't go the same way, otherwise you'll get caught in one of these category five storms, and you're, you will be out of luck. So, I'm going to suggest that we have a committee made up of those individuals that are in that profession that will mitigate some of the problems that we're having presently. I don't understand why we're sitting here having discussions that we know potentially that can kill not 1,000, we're talking about 10, 20,000 individuals. So we're going to have to do something to help this city address those needs. That's number one. Number, number two, when I said committee, I truly mean committee, because there's a lot of things that we can do, that I've seen from the city of Arlington, that will help you clear out what's going on in downtown Beaumont.
Thank you, Mr. Earls.
I thank you.
That's all I have, mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Now's the time for a council member comment, and I will start with Councilmember Duryo.
No comment, by the way. Just a few things. Actually, the stand is a very good way of communicating, Southeast Texas Alert Network. Unfortunately, a lot of people don't sign up for it. Takes less than five minutes, you can do it on your cell phone, you can do it on your home phone, and they do a good job of contacting you. Also, the EEOC has this thing called Blackboard Connect, where they pick an area of town, and they automatically call everyone and warn them. Also, there was an audible alarm on the corner of Ironton and Wilson in the north end for many years, because it's right above the fire station, and I used to hear it, and it was loud and clear. I don't know if it's still there or not, but it was there. The EEOC, I mean, not EEOC, the EOC, the fire department, EMS, and the police department are very experienced, and they're very capable when hurricanes come. They could probably give the people in Florida a study, because they've, they've emptied this city in 24 hours. When they have a mandatory evacuation, less than 24 hours, everybody's out, because I know at the fire department, because I helped them evacuate this city on more than one occasion. So since 2005, Hurricane Rita, 2008 Hurricane Ike, and all the other hurricanes, we even have evacuated Beaumont, and the hurricane didn't even come here, but we evacuated Beaumont. In about 12 hours, the city was gone. So they're very experienced at what they do, and they are very good at it. They were just here, got Captain Ockner check back there, he's the EOC coordinator, I'm glad he'll speak to you. He's right there with the tie on, and the maroon shirt. But I just want to say, we're very lucky to have the folks that we have that are doing that job, because they've been doing it for quite a while, they've done it many, many times, they're very efficient, and they're very good at what they do. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Councilmember Gitts.
Thank you, mayor. First, I just have to congratulate Emily Wheeler and her staff on an incredible Oktoberfest. I don't think she had anything to do with the weather, we'll leave that to God, but it was a great day, and the, the way they had that organized was to perfection, and I'd say that we probably had the biggest crowd ever there. When I got there at 3 o'clock, it was already packed, we've never had that before. I think they're estimating about 9,000 people showed up, so great, great job. I'd like to, you know, that was on the heels of having a shooting the night before at Rogers Park, and so, a couple nights before. And in that vein, I'd like to ask that we consider having a workshop to talk about putting cameras in the parks that are affected by criminal behavior. As part of that, I would like to see the police department provide us some stats, you know, as to which parks are having issues. I know Rogers Park has had now two shootings in the last three, four years, so I do think we need to put a camera out there, and if other parks are having problems, we'd need to look at that as well, and if any council member will second that request for workshop, I'd appreciate it. Lastly, I want to express my appreciation to council for taking the necessary step to start down the path to bringing the Battleship Texas to Beaumont. We might find that it's a sharp path, we might find that the obstacles are insurmountable, but anything worth doing, it doesn't necessarily come easy, and this is worth doing. The return on our investment is potentially large. So, thank you for those that supported, and for those that didn't, I hope you'll get behind it if you see. I hope you'll get behind it if you see fit as we get momentum going for, for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Uh, at the most recent conference we went to, I noticed when it came to charter initiatives and things on the ballot, other cities had charter committees. Uh, in the past, we had several instances where we had things on the ballot that most citizens did not understand. And to my understanding, the city council members, once you guys put it on the ballot, because I didn't understand myself, once you guys put it on the ballot, y'all not able to actually explain it. So I think something we should really consider is charter committees because we need citizens to understand and know what they're voting on when they're going through these things in the ballot. Another thing is, I've had several citizens contact me about some of the things currently on the ballot. So if we can figure out a way that maybe we can set up a meeting in the community, maybe some of these neighborhood associations where possibly the city attorney or somebody could come speak and explain to the citizens some of the things that are on the upcoming ballot. Because I think it's important that they actually understand. So if that's still considered that they can't explain or we can't explain.
Are you talking about for November?
For November.
That would be a county, uh, issue.
So we have three, three things that say city, okay?
Yeah.
So that would have to be county?
I would think so.
Yeah. So it's just good practice for council not to advocate for or against items that are on the ba- uh, on, on, on the ballot. But as it relates to charter amendments, those are things that obviously council has approved and set forth. So the law prohibits you from navigating for or against. The only item that's on the ballot, um, that affects the city is the MMD, um, Municipal Management District. And the only individuals who can vote on that are the individuals who live in the district, which if you remember, um, they, they came forth and petitioned the council to, uh, be allowed to put two mobile homes in that area. So the only thing that's going to affect are those two households, which is two mobile home units. I believe it's two individuals that live there that meets the state minimum requirement to vote for it. So that's not even an item that the entire city will be voting on. It's just going to be the individuals who live in that Municipal Management District.
I understand it, but the reality is on that sample ballot, when citizens see it, because it's on that sample ballot, they're calling us. And I just want to be able to make sure they understand.
So just to explain the sample ballot for the, the, the cost of production, they print one sample ballot. Even if you're, like, when they do ward elections, everyone, everyone on that sample ballot is up there, even if you don't live in that ward. So they print, they do it that way so that when they pass out a sample ballot, that A, they only have to incur one cost. But then two, so you can see who's all on the ballot. But it doesn't mean that that's something that you're eligible to vote for. When you go in to vote, your actual voting ballot may look different based on where you live.
Because it won't come up if you can't vote for it.
Exactly.
Yeah, but the mo- the most important thing is, like we said, communication. And when they call, I want to be able to adequately answer them. But with the charter, I do know council could not explain it. So if it is charter changes in the future, I think it'd be wise for the council to actually form a charter committee that can actually not advocate, but explain it to the citizens what they're actually voting for. Because that language can be fairly confusing when they go in that booth to vote.
But I feel for the Municipal Management, well, just in any sample ballot, I think it does tell you that this is just a general thing, that all the things that could be voted on and that your particular ballot could look different. So individuals who are calling and requesting that, if they don't live in that Municipal Management District, which I'm sure that they don't, then they're, that's not something that will affect them.
Okay, cool. Thank you. I got several calls. That's why I asked.
I, I got some calls too, but as far as like if we do charter changes or something like that, all of those are things that we discuss at the meeting. Every, everything before it goes on the ballot is discussed at the city council meeting. They could either come to the meeting or they could look at it online and it could be explained to them. So that just gives folks more reason to either come here or at least go online and look at it. Because all of that stuff is, all that info, I tell everybody, everything that you see or anything that we discuss is posted ahead of time and you can find it before, during, or after. Just have to get people to participate more.
And ju- and I understand that. But furthermore, I'm just, if I can make it any way possible, easy. Sometimes you got to bring it to them. I understand it's a form of, it can be like handicapping, but I just want to put the info, information out there as much as I can. Even for like our seniors and some of the people who don't understand, I want to simplify it and, you know, go to the people with it. But I understand what you're saying.
Thank you. Councilmember Phil Shaw.
No comment, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Samuel.
No comment, Mayor.
Our city manager.
Uh, a few, few things. Uh, it's good to hear about emergency management and the concern for it from the public. Not just from the public, but also from city council. Having spent about nine years in that profession myself, I, I really take it personal with that. So, uh, I think we should be, feel fortunate to have Tim and, and Shanniqua? Chiquana. I knew it. I got it right the first time. I apologize for that. Uh, as, uh, Emergency Management Coordinator and Deputy Coordinator, uh, these are people that you don't know or recognize until something happens. And then they're the most important people in, in the town. So we thank you, Tim and, and Shay.
That's safe.
Yeah. Uh, for what you do and what you do for this city and we appreciate it, uh, too. Uh, far as problems, uh, I encourage citizens not just to wait the council meetings or other, to, to, to submit their issues or, uh, problems here. Feel free to report them here at City Hall, report them to the city manager's office. Uh, we, we'll take a direct line and we'll address your issues. That's, that's what we do. So don't, don't just sit on an issue or problem. Be sure and communicate it to us so we can start to work with it and get that resolved for you. Uh, because if, if we don't know about it, it's kind of hard to fix for us to do that. And, uh, lastly, that's it for now. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Attorney Sheree.
I think everything has been said. I, I did other, the comments of Mayor Protim Duryo as it relates to our Baptist EOC staff and Councilman Getz. And so the events that happened this Saturday, he did forget one. The Oktoberfest was really nice. Um, me and my puppy greatly enjoyed that. So that's all.
Yes, y'all did. Y'all looked cute.
We did. He was, he's the cutest.
Barrett.
No comment, Mayor.
Chris.
Nothing. Thank you.
Oh, Todd left. I didn't even see him leave. Well, it's six oh seven and I'm going to wrap this up. I would like to say it was a very, very eventful, uh, weekend. Um, as Councilmember Getz always say, if you couldn't find anything to do in Beaumont Saturday, something was wrong because I attended, uh, Oktoberfest, tried to get to the Alzheimer's Walk. The street was so blocked off, I, I couldn't navigate through and I couldn't find a police officer to let me through the barricade because they were somewhere else. And then we had Oktoberfest. I have never seen that many people at Oktoberfest. There were cars parked all the way down Gladys. Uh, every parking space that you could even find was full. Um, the food was great. The vendors were great. The staff was great. It was perfect weather. I mean, you couldn't ask for a better event. But again, to Emily and all of the city, uh, staff, it was excellent and a great job. Also, um, I attended the Chamber House, uh, museum, which is on Calder Street. You've probably passed the house a million times. It's a beautiful, uh, colonial two-story house with the big white posts. Of course, um, the invitation said that, um, there was, I thought I was going to a birthday party for a lady that was a hundred and ten years old. And I would not miss that for nothing in the world. But when I got there, she would have been a hundred and ten. And in honor of her one hundred and tenth birthday, uh, the Chamber House celebrated by opening up the house, allowing you to go in and tour the house. And the house is just as it was when they lived there, beautiful home. So during the holidays, if you get an opportunity, please get a chance to go by and visit it. Had the finest alligator, uh, handbag sitting on the sofa. I mean, just fabulous. But they have a quite unique story, two sisters that was left a hundred thousand dollars that they turned into twelve million dollars that they invested and learned the stock market early, early on. And so it was, uh, I really enjoyed it, uh, being out there Saturday. Also, um, condolences to Reverend Van Jordan. He's the director, he was the director of the Harley Hog Club, Chapter Forty-nine seventy-four and Fifty-two ninety-eight. Um, funeral was, I've, I've never seen a funeral that big in Beaumont. Um, it was, uh, held at my, uh, home church and, uh, they said they needed somewhere that they could hold seven hundred people. But I think it was more than seven hundred people there. And so condolences, uh, again to, uh, that Harley chapter and also to Reverend, uh, Jordan's family. Also, uh, on tomorrow, Beaumont Symphony will be celebrating their seventy-fifth year uh, at the Julie Rogers Theater on tomorrow. And, um, um, let's see. On last Sunday, I attended the one hundred and fifty-year celebration of First Baptist Church, which is, uh, Councilmember Neil's, uh, home church and wonderful, wonderful service. Um, his current pastor and the pastor that spoke, uh, Dr. Kelly, uh, played in the original, uh, First Baptist Church, which is the Terrill Library. Uh, he was locked in the church at four years old, but he was able to give, uh, uh, the, the service on, uh, last Sunday. But I really enjoyed it. A lot of history in that church. And after a hundred and fifty years, I guess it's a lot to talk about. But I really enjoyed attending that. Really enjoyed it. And so it is six twelve and, uh, I guess that's about all of it. Thank each and every one of you for joining us today and being patient and being here. And so thank you. We will adjourn to executive session. Our day isn't over yet.